Let's see how that goes. There it is. Yes. So, welcome to the first Village Board meeting of Boston Spa of the month of October. Time is flying here, ten, ten, twenty-three. And first things first, let us go to minute approval. Can I get a motion that the minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, its meeting be approved? Trustee Madenta? Trustee Cormos, discussion? Nothing? Got nothing? All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain.
Well, hold on, hold on. We actually have a weirdness here.
I can't.
Yeah, two of them can't.
I can't vote.
Yeah.
You can't vote?
No, I wasn't here.
Neither of them?
Correct.
That's a good point.
Okay, these are an issue.
Well, there's some.
You're always allowed, so you know, you are allowed to, if you've reviewed the minutes, you are allowed to vote on them even if you're not there. It's a common misconception.
Oh.
All right.
I thought you couldn't vote on them if you wanted.
As long as you have reviewed them, then you can vote on them. I know it makes no sense, but that is common.
All right. So when you guys vote, there's some things I'll get you with, but I don't want to make something like that.
You don't want to.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries as alvo I, and that will be three at the least. I'll call unanimous with an abstention, with an abstention by trustee Baskin. Okay, that was a little more difficult than I expected.
So shy.
Yeah, no way to me say. Here's announcements. We have a lot going on tonight, so I will forego those tonight. Besides saying something that you're probably gonna say, Sean, which is paving continues tomorrow. I'll let you handle that if you'd like out of respect. So wait for the liaison report coming up right now. I'm gonna start review, Sean. How's that?
Oh geez. Yeah, so, yes, we're continuing paving. We're trying to finish up, you know, obviously before the cold weather really sets in and the asphalt plants close. I actually didn't get a poll to Jeff today, so I don't know what his latest road is.
I'll get you the roads for tomorrow are, which were scheduled according to notices to Lower Boston Avenue, Court Street, Trumbull, Rosewood Court, and Liberty.
Wow, so that. And regarding leaves and pickup, I know some people have started to put piles out there, but please continue at least until the middle of October. I believe that's what the signs say. But because they're paving, they're gonna, they're gonna be slightly delayed. So please continue to bundle and bag. That's about it.
You know, one other thing too, Kelly Park, we're intending on trying to get the paving, re-paving the asphalt square done this year to get the things ready for next spring, essentially, the pickleball, basketball ideas. We'll also try to get the fencing up in coordination with that. I know a lot of people are using that as kind of an overflow parking area. And at a certain point, don't be surprised when that ceases. So, you know, please, you know, assume when you see blockades or eventually not park on that asphalt area so that we can get a date without worrying about telling people, et cetera. That'll be hopefully in the next month, as you said, before asphalt plants decide to close up.
Second Library Board meeting I'm missing because they happen to be on the same night as the Village. I missed the previous one, but I did have some news from the Friendsville Library. There'll be a presentation, songs and talk by our own Dan Bergeron on October nineteenth, Thursday, for freshmen since six-thirty and concert at seven. And I went last year with my husband, and he's quite a delightful entertainer for all ages. He's really good.
Dan or your husband?
No, not my husband. Although he does play guitar, but.
There you go.
So the library itself is having a great give-back event on Saturday, October twenty-first, where, you know, young people can do cards that will be sent to veterans and nursing homes. That's from one to two-thirty. And you do need to register for that event. You can do that on our library website. And the library's also having a food drive for their blessing box, which is located upstairs from ten-seventeen through ten-twenty-one. And there's a list of items up at the circulation desk. And hopefully people can be generous and make sure that blessing box is well stocked. And that's all I have.
Bring it back. Go ahead.
Just one of the first things we wanted to talk about for BSBPA is I hope all of you got to go to the car show. It was amazing. They had four hundred and fifty cars. And the weather was so iffy and sometimes car showers, if that's the term, gets skittish whether or not to bring their cars. So that many people came out and just applaud the BSBPA and all their volunteers for all the hard work. I see so many people here that were a part of it. The BSBPA also did wanna thank Liz and myself and, you know, for volunteering and Frank for making your pick. So there was a lot of positive media coverage for the Village because of events like the car show. So thank you so much to the BSBPA for that. And now they are turning for, you know, their attention to the holiday season with a big emphasis on the Small Business Saturday. They've really been working and trying to figure out ways to, you know, really push our small businesses right around the holidays, right after Thanksgiving to shop locally. There are so many stores here and restaurants that would make wonderful gifts and have wonderful gifts. So for the holidays, they're also planning for the tree lighting on December first. So there will be many other opportunities and I'll remind everybody. But, oh, and they're also working to bring back the holidays from December. So I don't have details on that yet, but when I do, we'll share. Just really wanna applaud the BSBPA for everything they've been doing. So, not though on Art Committee, and I'm sure Ben can fill in more, but they're working really hard again, trying to figure out how the best way to kind of work through the Saratoga Arts Grant and encourage local artists to, to think about Boston Spa and bring their projects here and providing them support through the application process. They are gonna be making some selections that they will present to our board, as I said, in November. So just a reminder for that. And if anyone is interested in talking to the Committee on the Arts about Saratoga Arts grant funding and how Boston Spa can be supportive of their projects, reach out to Boston Spa Arts. I think their website is bosparts. B-Spot, thank you. B-Spotarts.org.
One quick note, you know, planning on reaching out to ASCC Mark Black about the Birdhouse contract next year, later this week. After got a few pieces of feedback from trustees. So we'll be heading in that direction. Didn't want you to think it was being ignored. It's just waiting to see what feedback would come in. Ben?
All right, so. Bethany? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So the park and tree, there are two things you wanted to share. One is that they are reviewing the Village Park rules and in discussion about how to simplify into something the Village can easily put on signs and be hung in parks. So I think they gave you us feedback on the park rules themselves. So now they're just working on what should go on a sign. And their first official meeting with Studio A Landscape Architecture and Engineering is on Thursday, October twelfth, ten a.m., in Wizwol Park. They will work to come up, and this is from Caitlin, the chair. They will work to come up with an ideal plan for updates and improvements in the park with a strong emphasis on its use as the home of a farmer's market and other vendor events, and with a desire for improved aesthetic and functionality as it is the center of our business district and creating more welcoming space for all Village residents and visitors to enjoy. So that's what they're up to. And then the Committee on the Arts. Where did that mention? The Arts Council. And we encourage people to apply for Village fiscal sponsorship if they have a nice art project they wanna pursue. The Sounds of Winter is November twenty-eighth. It's a concert at three P.M. at the Saratoga County History Center. There's gonna be another one in December. The Committee on the Arts' next meeting is October eighteenth and at seven P.M. probably in the library here, I would think. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks to Treasurer's Report, which is on file, balance sheet. The FPR has completed their September bank reconciliations. Limited revenues, six hundred and forty thousand dollars to date, and it lists out the revenues. The Village Office is preparing to send a re-lovy for taxes and utilities, being done when we send to the town of Milton, town of Austin, mid-October. Sales tax, the total September sales tax distribution for Village was a hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars countywide. The amount was up ten point six percent for the September month, which reflects, like, two months earlier, if I'm accurate, it's July, I think that is. So it was one point three million dollars higher than twelve point eight million dollars received in the period reflected by September twenty-twenty-two, which is very good. Year to date, seven months, they were up just over four point seven million dollars countywide, or five point two percent. So very healthy showing right now, often for sales tax. And with gas prices and the gas tax still intact, I'm curious to see where that goes because last year at this time, I think we were still in the gas tax holiday. So I think it may continue to roll higher, but we'll see what happens over the next couple of months. I think they ended around October of last year, I remember, sir. Okay, no?
I'll ask the question, what is our increase? What are our increases been? You said the overall. Does it reflect the increases?
It's basically about the same as the county because the changes in the assessment role numbers are very, very subtle usually in that respect. So what you see here for county of five point two percent for the year is probably somewhere in the five to five point four percent range, I had a guess, so I'll top my head here.
Thank you.
Okay, no presentations tonight because we have a litany of things to go through here. And it's pressure luck rules tonight. So we're trying to see if we can get this done before pressure luck ends ABC tonight. How's that? Full business, Ethics Law. So just to update everybody on where we stand after our last meeting, last discussion on this. So a couple of meetings ago, it was sent to the Ethics Board, which is not to confuse with the Ethics Committee, which was the enlarged group from last year that was passed through Mayor's Advisory Group on Ethics to given attempted rewrite. It was reviewed by the Village Attorney and then given to the Village Board to consider. So Ethics Board took the most recent draft at that time, reviewed it, I guess they spent a couple of hours based on what Pete Martin had told us at the last meeting. Julie Gazitos, Chair of hearing, so correct me if I'm wrong on anything on this aspect, but please. And that version was handed to our attorney again to review. She did that and also sent it out to the board. The board subsequently made additional changes and then after some back and forth, made additional changes last night. So there's a version that's in the attachments that is not the accurate version currently of the Ethics Law. If I'm correct on that, based on what is being directed by email on this whole thing, the most recent version was from nine o'clock last night. So nobody in the crowd, obviously, has seen that version. There were some changes that I haven't even really summarized. If you'd like to, I think you had sent a memo to give ideas of what's changed maybe from the Ethics Board version forward or something along those lines?
Happy to do that. If you'd like me.
I think for transparency's sake, that might be a good idea.
I'm happy to do that. Just an email, not a number.
Sorry, my bad.
All right, so I did review and summarize the changes and my computer decided not to work. A couple of the changes that, there were changes to Julie, I can call you Julie, right?
Yes.
Okay. There were some.
I think that's the same.
Thank you. Technology. So there were a couple of changes. And I can identify them if you want me to go through specifically.
Bill, however you feel is good for transparency's sake on this, I guess.
There were a couple of questions that were asked. For example, there was a twenty-seven fifteen E. Julie had identified something as being unlimiting, as being unnecessarily limiting. And the response was, but that's the Milton code. They didn't address it. So I think that's something that should be discussed. There's a couple of things with respect to grandfathering folks in as to when they're supposed to file their annual disclosure statement. Julie, and when I say Julie, I think it's Julie on behalf of.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm not throwing you under the bus.
No, everything was unanimous, though. What I submitted was to the.
So the royal we.
The royal.
Indicated that they would like a grandfathering so that the annual disclosure statement could be supplied on the annual date of May thirtieth. That was changed from thirty days to forty-five days, but that wasn't addressed. There was, there was removal of certain, family member was limited more, which I think was good. And that's what the committee or the board had wanted, the Ethics Board had wanted. There was some, there was quite a bit about this disclosure form. There were things that the Ethics Board had requested be removed, for example, the disclosure form. Let's remove that until we can look at the disclosure form. Let's deal with some of the privacy implications. And some of that was dealt with today with respect to removal of tax ID, and I appreciate that, you taking that into consideration. There was the training. There was a back and forth on how many hours of training, where it should be, that that just wasn't consistent with respect to, for example, three hours, the board said one point five hours. This board said two hours, and New York City Ethics Commission does it. But then there's language saying the village clerk's gonna tell them when to do it. So it's just, there's no, there's a consistency issue there. And then the biggest thing that was brought up was there's language with respect to whether this would have any impact on the unions that in the Village. And we tried to, we did reach out to the mayor and then I popped on, reached out with Labor Council, which is not our firm.
Elaine Gold, I'm sorry.
Elaine Gold, who's wonderful.
Cheers.
And she's on vacation, but she did pop in and identify there were some concerns because terms and conditions of employment are required to be bargained. That's just, you know, that's drummed into your head. You have to be in coordination with the Taylor Law to make sure that you're not improper practices, things of that nature. I spoke to my partner Larry, who also does labor law today, and I told the board this as well, that, you know, they put, there's something in the law now that says this doesn't supersede collective bargaining agreements. In speaking with Larry, we went back and forth. First, we thought it was too little because it doesn't talk about the Taylor Law. And then we came to the conclusion that it's actually irrelevant because, of course, you can't legally, you can't legally go in contrast to a collective bargaining agreement because that's a violation of the labor law. So I said that should probably be removed, but you should talk to your labor council. The other issue, the labor part of it, is when you have to change a term or condition of employment, you have to do impact bargaining or decisional bargaining, and I'm sorry if I'm just going on and on, but impact bargaining is probably what you would have here. They can pass the law, but before they implement the law, the union has the right to say, hey, that's a term and condition of my employment, that I can't have any other, you know, employees out there. I can't have, I can't own property or I can't, and I don't know the specifics. I can't, I need to have this disclosure form by a certain date. What if there's discipline? All of that is bargaining, and it's impact bargaining. So you can't implement it without the union. So there's just these things that came up, and we just didn't think about it until, and the mayor did bring it up, and I spoke to some labor attorneys and is concerned. So that's something that I have said should be verified by the retained labor council, who is on vacation. Then today, the only other things that I noticed that I looked at about an hour ago when I first was able to, is that there's new definitions. There's a definition of advisory committee and there's a definition of department head, and I'm not sure where they came from or the purpose. And then it looks like the word employee was removed everywhere and substituted with department head. Again, not sure why, so I'm not sure if it's no longer applying to employees or not. So there's, there's these things that I've reached out to the board and I've asked them to discuss it. In response to their very pointed question, yes, the law is legal as written. However, I have concerns and I think they should be addressed. But I was specifically said, is this legal? So I said yes, but there are specific concerns. And I just think that everyone should discuss them and, you know, understand where everyone's coming from before this goes out to the rest of the public or yet another public hearing. That work for you?
That worked for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Julie, would you like to say anything on behalf of the Ethics Board? We guys, since this is kind of your first chance since the review that you did officially in the hands of the board, et cetera?
I would like to say.
Just make sure to turn that on. And there you go.
Okay. I would like to say thank you for looking at our changes that we requested and accepting quite a few of those. I especially, we were especially concerned about the definition of a family member, and that was addressed. I would, I would like the financial disclosure form, actually the matters to be in the disclosure form to really be limited to members of the household. I think that including all family members is too much. So we would like to see that limited to the spouse, domestic partner, or household member or children that live within the household. But I would like to say I agree with everything that Carla has brought up as an issue and all the issues that remain outstanding. We still believe should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thanks to your board for taking the time they did on this. It means a lot. And again, they are not paid to do this, and so means a lot for that reason especially. Okay, that's where we stand. And from there, I mean, or what are your thoughts?
Well, we have a motion, and so not to repeat ourselves, maybe we just wait for the motion to talk about. I can give a little more summary of what changes were made, just make sure it's a little more clear. So some of the things that made, the whole idea is to make this law stronger and stronger even than what the Ethics Committee group, whatever it was, did. And so that includes an annual financial disclosure form. It includes a, some additional family members of less than originally to confront with the Ethics Group. We added the appointee for some provisions. So advisory committees, where there's appointees, they also need to adhere to Ethics Rules. We required adherence to approved motions and laws. And the most recent version that is a change from the ones, the one that was posted is we added definitions for advisory committee. Carla, that was actually your question maybe a month ago or so because we, we have advisory committee members listed in this Ethics Law. And then the question, but what's an advisory committee? So we thought that we take you up on your question and add that. We added the definition of department head because in response to concerns about labor issues and bargaining agreements, we, instead of having the financial disclosure form applied to all employees, we're saying it will apply to department heads. And the other piece that the labor lawyer flagged as potentially a real issue, other things she sort of viewed like, yes, you have to think about it, but this one, she said, could be an issue, was twenty-seven-nine future employment. And so we list, we limited that section also to department heads. And that's why we, so that's to simplify our relations with the union to some degree. And that's why we added a definition of what a department head is in the definitions.
Quick question, I have to interrupt you. Ben, but I'm thinking that you said, one law said that we had no authority over court. Is that accurate for department head per se or whatever that might be of the court or just judges?
No, no, no. I said I didn't know if the court had a department head. Village courts, village courts, I believe, are under UCA, but town courts are not, so I don't know how that works.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right. And then, and then again, just to encapsulate that we have been responsive to the Ethics Group in response to their comments. We have reduced the definition of family. We have increased the time for completion of the disclosure form. We have reduced the annual training from three to two hours, and we have increased the time to notify someone they have been charged. So we are making a good faith effort to create a document that is a compromise that does represent different points of view and is still a very strong document. So we have responded to concerns raised about labor issues that Frank has raised. And he also raised some general concerns about the financial form that we responded to. And so, as well as Carl's issue. So we have tried to incorporate all the main concerns. We're glad that this form is legal and we think it's right.
Yes, I also might clarify, it does cover employees, but not on the future employment and on the disclosure.
That's right.
But it does cover employees in this document, and it also covers appointees. So it's not true that we deleted employees.
That's true, yeah. Their employees are out. It's just those two sections we made them department heads. And appointees are not required in this law to complete the disclosure form.
So our goal is to schedule a public hearing. And, you know, we, this has been out there for.
Let's talk about that under the motion. That's what I was just gonna do again.
Hold on one second. I'm just trying to look at track changes version real quick here. Okay, so in twenty-seven-four, for instance, employees still exist. One seventy-five. Yeah.
Yeah, in my defense, I skimmed it because I got it last night. So I saw that it improved. So I didn't mean to indicate that employee was not anywhere within the document.
So where, where did you draw the line on employee, I guess, is the question? Because that becomes kind of relevant to how much of an issue it could be for the union question, I guess.
We really changed the hot button, what we thought were hot button issues, where the financial disclosure form, you know, does ask for some disclosure, and it really applies to people who have some discretion in their position, you know, who can direct bids or quotes and contracts, things like that. And that's really the important people to disclose. And then the future employment, our labor lawyer particularly flagged that. So we took employees out of that provision in terms of restricting their future employment. Everything else is basically still has a place, which is standard for these kinds of laws. Like just about every town around here, they include, when the Ethics Law applies to both elected officials, officers, and employees. So that's pretty standard.
Right. But the question is, have they worked it out with their unions or not in those situations? And what effect they had ultimately? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, that was, I mean, again, just, just for my clarification, I did see that you guys tried to make, you know, some of the changes that Ethics Board, Committee Board asked for, notably the family member definition. But I guess, again, taking a step back, although this is permitted and could be passed, does this satisfy kind of our concerns about labor, like creating issues? I'm not sure that it quite does. I mean.
I haven't, like I said, we're not labor council, and your labor council, Elaine, said that she didn't go through the entire document. She skimmed it and saw some issues. She flagged it. That's what she said in her email. And I sent that email to the board today.
I mean, I guess I just, you know, I do appreciate the efforts. I did, I did see them. I marked them. But, you know, with that. But you know, with that in mind, I mean, could we just give a little more time for third one through?
That's my question, I think ultimately with Carla is let's say we want to set a public hearing, but when would we have to post the version we considered by or how?
Terry, is it 10 days before?
Yes.
10 days before, so if you're gonna have it at the next meeting, it's.
10, 10 calendar days, you're saying? So by Friday, we'd have to have it, you're saying?
It would have to be in the paper on Friday.
Okay, because it's the time we notice it that locks in basically. So we technically have three more days to get final blessing from labor, make the changes about labor agreements, which is still in this version, et cetera. We still have to make changes. It's clear that it's not at least Labor Council at Carla's firm. We have something that probably needs to disappear because of the Taylor Act. Taylor Act, Taylor Law, Taylor Law, excuse me. So there are changes necessary no matter what year. So we could set a public hearing technically or try to, and then by Friday try to come up with the versions that we can notice it appropriately on the site, et cetera. I mean.
Well, you should have that, Terry, when do you have to let them know? When you, like I know with respect to the post are, it has to be a certain day, I don't know with the.
Because that.
Yeah.
Thursday?
Yeah, Wednesday would be better for guaranteed Thursday, Friday publication.
For guaranteed Friday, yeah.
I honestly don't rely on those one or two days.
So at least we'll have to make fixes, we know that. And you know, I guess still the way to do it would be to, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I don't.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure she's got this.
Well, no, I understand.
Go ahead, Bernadette.
Waiting for him to finish, I was waiting for everybody else.
No, you're fine, I'm sorry about that.
I guess, you know, to everyone's point, and again, I see a lot of the requested changes. But because of this email, you know, last night, 9:49 to be precise. I appreciate it, I saw it. I had all my copies and read them side by side. But you know, noted, noting the section that 27-25, that's gotta take, be taken out and you know, language that's gotta be adjusted. We still need, like I literally at this point, I was like, well, which, which copy do I look at? You know? And I'll, it's just rather, let's have the final copy before, you know, we get out to the public. I'm just, I don't want anybody to be confused and that's, that's really my main concern.
The thing is, is the sentence we put in there that it doesn't supersede any, any labor agreement. Why does that have to come out? If that's in there, that basically says any labor agreement supersedes this agreement and takes care of any other additional issues. And I don't understand what additional issues about labor agreements are since we took out employees from, you know, what other parts of that wouldn't apply to union employees? I mean, you said there's changes that have to be made, but you haven't been specific.
I, I don't know because I'm not Labor Council. So I've advised what our internal Labor Council indicated with respect to superfluousness of having that section in there. Obviously, it, it's like saying, like I said, you should not commit murder. I mean, it's like saying the obvious, it's already in the state law, you can't violate the Taylor Law. It can stay in, but it's superfluous. If it stays in, you should change it to indicate that it will not be in violation of the Taylor Law. Again, we're not Labor Council and Labor Council has specifically said she hasn't looked at it. And that's up to the Board to decide what to do with that. And she is on vacation, I don't know when she.
Yeah, well, I think that maybe it's superfluous, but it, it's there and it clearly states that we will not, you know, nothing in this law will supersede any labor contract. And we've taken out labor from some critical issues and I, you know, that there may be something else, there may not be anything else. And I, I'd like to get this code off our plate. We have other issues we want to deal with and, and this is going on forever. And why, you know, I, I just wonder why the labor issue wasn't.
Honestly, I didn't even think about it because I honestly didn't think about it. I, I did, it didn't go past your Labor Council. I don't know what to tell you on that, that's not my responsibility.
Julie, go ahead.
Okay, with, with respect to anything that could violate a labor issue, when a complaint is made to the Ethics Board, the Ethics Board, you have to assume does not know labor laws. So if, if a, if a complaint gets filed with the Ethics Board and we say, oh, this looks, this looks valid and we then send it off saying this person violated the ethics rules and it ends up being we violated labor laws, I mean, it didn't, then what happens there, right? I mean, I, I think it's just better to have a Labor Council look at it. I, even if I stayed on the Board, which I, I cannot, I don't know labor law either. So if a complaint comes in and it, and it's a labor law violation for us to address it, we will have no idea. Does that make sense?
It does, and I want to make sure that, I, I just want to make sure that I understand what I'm saying here. I don't want to be mistaken. That there is nothing that is illegal that I can tell from this law. What I indicated was the law could be passed, but it can't be implemented. So there's a difference. So you can pass it, but you can't implement it in the event the unions come to you and say, hey, you need to have impact bargaining on this before you implement it. That's the, and I do know some labor law, but that's about where my knowledge stops. So I am providing the knowledge that I know. So I'm not saying you can't pass it, I'm not saying you can't set a public hearing. I'm indicating that we won't be able to implement certain aspects of it without potential impact bargain. And I say potential because the union is the one who has to bring that up.
Maybe a question of Scott, real quick about on this topic. I imagine many labor agreements have their own disciplinary and ethics sort of ways to treat those sort of complaints.
Police has disciplinary for sure, obviously, yeah.
So I, I think that's part of why this is important. And to your point, if you guys receive something, you proceed and, and go through a disciplinary process, not a, you know, ruling process and you weren't supposed to in the first place, that, that's where the village is getting come up. And the other question, I know, and forgive me, you've made some adjustments, but does this still, did the new changes kind of remove the problem about disparity between labors that is negotiated and then labor that is not, you know? So, you know, confidential, like are we, because there, there was that question about whether it, it was creating an unfair system in some degree?
No, or discriminatory type of problem where one set of employees are handled under one set of rules and another set of employees are handled under another set of rules, basically, because we can't fully implement everything to against the union employees.
I mean, basically, this just says if you're an employee or a public official or officer, you have to act ethically. And there really, there's not a lot of obligations beyond that. I, we do have language in here to address your concerns, Julie. And I'm sure, you know, you guys are smart enough that you know, oh, this is a labor issue, I better get some advice on this. You wouldn't just do something. But, but there is language in here that, again, we didn't write it came from an existing ethics law. It's under enforcement penalty for offenses. It says employee related enforcement in its discretion and after hearing in accordance with Article 3 of the State Administrative Procedure Act and subject to Article 75 of Civil Service Law and collective bargaining agreements to the extent practicable. The Village Ethics Board may recommend for action to the Board trustee in appropriate disciplinary action, which may include a written warrant, et cetera, et cetera. So it, you know, there's an awareness that this is happening within a context of civil law and labor law.
But did co-hosts check this with their union representation before they passed it? Which I'm assuming this came from co-hosts, it's a large chunk that did. That's, that's a question I don't think any of us have the answer to because there may be a reason they felt able to do it because probably their unions raised their heads when they caught wind of it right away and negotiated through it, is my guess, but I don't know. And it sounds like the other two attorneys that are connected here don't know either. And we're all kind of like, well, what to do? And I, I will take, you know, the, the brunt here for delayed reaction from a union point of view. The reason why I actually kind of finally started thinking in this area because I just have been talking to Scott Kearns, BBW's, Teamsters contract is up soon. And we're just talking about, you know, when we're gonna start that discussion, negotiation, et cetera. And so when I started reading the word employee, employee, employee over and over again, as I went back through it one more time, I'm like, oh, crud, this may be an issue now. And so I apologize for not catching it sooner, but not all of us think like labor attorneys on this stuff either. But Carla had one thing she wanted to bring up too, I think.
I just wanted to, to make sure that the 27-23A that you just read from, that particular section is what I was talking about. That part could not be implemented without impact bargaining. Because it talks about discipline and it says, well, all of this stuff, but it still should be impact bargaining. Again, impact, not decisional. Decisional means you couldn't pass this. Impact means you can't implement it. So again, you can have a public hearing, you can pass the law. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record saying that because I've been told otherwise. You can't pass it, you can have a public hearing, you may not be able to implement some of these things until you do bargaining, that's all.
You may not be able to implement it for people, union members that are part of a collective bargaining agreement. Those people outside of that, non-union, you can't implement, correct?
Well, sure, that's, we're only talking about the unions.
Right, so it sounds to me that we could move forward this and then it wouldn't necessarily apply immediately until the next collective bargaining agreement, which would have to be incorporated into the next bargaining agreement.
I, I don't know, but yes, I'm saying you can move forward. I think I've said it 10 times, you can move forward.
In that case, I think we should schedule the public hearing for the next meeting and move this forward.
I think we should.
A whole motion.
I think we should schedule a public hearing, but not post the version until we actually make the changes that are gonna be recommended by tomorrow afternoon for posting purposes.
I think we can make the change, they're very minor changes if any.
Right, but we need to find, we need a final version without Lou Ankenon essentially at the end of the day. So that's, that's what we'll have to do regardless of what we do tonight on the public hearing. Nobody's, and the incredible thing here is nobody has said, don't set a public hearing. The only question is when do we have to have this in by to make sure we can post it for a Monday, October 23rd, public hearing?
I had, so when we get to this, although we sort of have, I have the thing open, I can make edits as we talk. Unless you do, Carla, you have, because we, there's not a lot of edits, I think, that we could just get this done and have.
Well, let's not do it, let's not do it tonight in real time. This is where we always, jumping off a cliff, let's just get it done tomorrow morning.
I'd like to do it tonight.
Well, the thing is, is we don't have the advice of a labor attorney, that's what we need. And that's what we need to get tomorrow.
Right.
She's on vacation.
Well, I'll try, I'll try to get her by phone. I'll, I'll try to get her by email tonight because there's a three hour difference where she is anyway. And then if she doesn't respond, she doesn't respond.
I say we move forward and if labor has to get delayed in implementation, then it's delayed in implementation.
We are going to try and hurry this tomorrow is where this is going.
The motion.
So I, I think we kind of have the idea. With respect to Woods Hollow, I think we all came to an agreement via email that we'll push this to a, an executive session because I kind of read between the lines, I was the topic. Would be with respect to it, I think it's contractual nature, so let's wait for that at the end of the meeting, we'll do it. So, okay. Brownfield Opportunity Area Zoning RFP, zoning advisory committees, just an update here, again, you know, the effort transparency and those like Marilyn on the zoning advisory committee heard this basically the other night, but I'll kind of re-explain for everybody. So we have received, or I did email from Lisa Nagel, formerly of Elon, her firm merged. And I don't want to butcher what the name of the other firm is. But I suggested that Bernadette and I get on the phone calls, since only two of us can be on that phone call, let's talk with her. And her concern was she saw the BOA, that's Brownfield Opportunity Area, RFP, and the zoning RFP. And she said, look, when it comes to this stuff, you need to do your Brownfield Opportunity RFP work first and then your zoning work second because the BOA informs the zoning. And what's meant by that essentially, correct me if I'm wrong in anything that you've heard on that call, Bernadette, is that Brownfield Opportunity work from here will identify a zone that is nominated as the Brownfield Opportunity Zone to help provide credits for people that might develop those areas and determine what the usages might be for those areas. So once you establish that mapping for that zone and you also establish the general uses that might come with that, then that can fold over into zoning where the zoning committee can ensure that we're embracing, as long as it's something consistent with what the zoning they want be in that area is or should be. They would embrace that to either fold it into direct zoning or create an overlay zone for that map area. And so that's why if you try to run them currently, you may end up tripping over each other. And so the notion that we discussed with Lisa was, well, can we use our great new zoning advisory committee also as the BOA committee and give them some work to do so that essentially, instead of tripping over each other in two different committees, they'll know what their decisions were on one to inform the other? And the answer was yes, and I think we actually meet the standards of what the BOA committee would be if we go that route because it was for women of minority representation, stakeholder representation, diversity in general, you know, different classes within the village of, you know, housing and business owners, et cetera. It, it's a little bit in depth, but it seemed like we had essentially met the standards for that. She said it's a good idea, it's, it's definitely doable in that respect. So I presented that information to the zoning advisory committee the other night. They're waiting for more advisement. Liz wanted to talk to Lisa as well, I believe she's on vacation, everybody's on vacation except for us guys, let's go. But Bernadette and Liz are gonna talk to Lisa soon.
Lisa hasn't gotten back yet, so.
I'd like to talk, talk to Lisa because I frankly look at it sort of the other way that first you get the basics of zoning for the downtown business districts, which is where those brownfield projects exist. And then that informs that, you know, they may have some terrific idea about a use that zoning said, no, we, you know, we don't agree that that use or that height or that whatever.
But zoning can always supersede that, as I said. Zoning doesn't have to endorse a six story building type of idea, because that was the example we used the other night. Zoning can say no to that ultimately.
Right, but it.
Zoning has to come first to do that.
BOA, as I understand it.
It's the other way around, Ben.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Goes into a whole planning process. They actually, you know, do concept drawings of buildings and stuff. So, you know, I, I do think that it potentially is a good idea to combine them, except, you know, I've got a copy here of their guidance and the one thing about the BOA process is it's very prescriptive. It says you do this, and you do this, you do this. And it's pretty detailed and it goes, you know, to a deeper design level than zoning. And also, it's a whole lot of work for that committee. But the, you know, second task on here, the first was the project planning meeting and the third task was the RFP, but you know, so far we haven't established a project steering committee. The contractor shall establish a steering committee to oversee the nomination process. The committee, the committee shall include members that represent diverse interests within the community, including but not limited, local and municipal officials from the community in which the project is located, community-based organizations and not-for-profits, regional planning entities and other regional groups, that's not in our, in our zoning committee, appropriate state and federal agencies, not in our zoning committee, private or business interests are, property owners are, non-governmental entities and civic groups aren't in the zoning, environmental groups or organization aren't in our zoning committee, and then area residents and the public at large, which are. And my impression as far as property owners was that in the BOA process, it would be the owners of those brownfields that would participate in that process. You know, in other words, they ultimately agree to a use and a design. And so, you know, you get it set up front and then, you know, when they get, they go forward, everybody's in agreement that that's what's going to be built on that, including the owner of the property, which is key.
So the time period that was supposed to be offset based on, and Bernadette, correct me if I'm wrong on this, go ahead. I think you, you want to say is about three months was the advised offset because that would be the timeframe most likely. It was about three months was the advised offset because that would be the timeframe most likely where the mapping. Would be done first for nomination purposes or nomination area. And also one note to you. The BOA is a much more consultant driven process than a committee driven process based on the fact that. The award was in the hundred forty thousand dollar range, I believe with a match of ours. To take it up to around the hundred sixty thousand dollar range ultimately. So. The assumption is that the consultant is doing a lot more work than the committee in a BOA scenario where. It's a little bit more reverse in the zoning situation, except for probably drawing the map itself is probably more consultant driven. And then writing the actual law, but you know, they're going to be doing a lot more participation in that side of it. Go ahead, Bernadette.
Yeah, when we had this call with Lisa, she said about a delay of about two to three months. We'd we'd kind of give a good time for BOA to get a head start. And when we talked to the Department of State, that is a different sort of makeup and there are guidance on how you make up a board, but. You know. Department of State did allow the village to pursue a RFP first so that there could be guidance from whoever we decide is the consultant. To handle BOA, you know, if there needs to be tweaks to whatever final committee works on this, you know, certainly I think that. You know, it's probably easy to do and we can work on that. I don't know when Lisa gets back. I think probably next week and I hope that we can get on call as soon as possible so she can explain more. More in detail what her thoughts were, but my understanding was that because and then Frank touched upon this because brownfield and you even touched on this. It's a more detailed thing. It would be a real challenge and kind of. Kind of set the village back in either direction. If BOA is saying this, I think it's more market research. This property can really, you know. Benefit from this type of development, whereas I feel like zoning might be more these areas. This would be good to be R two zoning or whatever we end up calling it in the long run. But I do think it might be wise to really take into account that detailed study. That, you know, whoever it will be to guide zoning. I think that we have a lot of smart people that we all kind of collectively put together. So, you know, I just think rather than. Kind of having not the would be adversarial, but just this like kind of rubbing of of interest. I think giving just a little bit of a head start for BOA can help everybody kind of work in concert better together. So. I hope that we get on call Lisa real soon and hopefully clear some of this up. And hopefully can kind of see where she's at.
We love Bingo.
I guess the concerns I have. To me, it makes sense. I don't know if we can do this, but. To do the zoning before you do the BOA because the zoning is the big picture. And talks about what can go in a space and then BOA is very specific and it should. Fit within the context of what the community wants for zoning, I would think. And also, you know, the zoning committee we have. They signed up for zoning and it's really as Liz articulated, it's not set up for the BOA. I think it's not a bad idea to think about how the. How they can be, if they can be added, but ideally they, I think they would do zoning first as initially intended for this group. And then move into the BOA if there's opportunities, but. But we'd have to approach them and ask them. It's not what they signed up for. It's not in the charter for their committee. And I don't know that it fits very well. It's it's pretty clear that. Basically on what Liz just read was. That the zoning committee is not a brownfield opportunity committee, period. So I don't really understand trying to intermingle the both. I think that's way too much. And it also doesn't represent the people who are supposed to be represented. In the, within the committee. So I may beat a dead horse, but I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think both of these can be done in tandem. I don't see any reason to wait moving forward zoning and as it may turn out, the RFPs may. Have a mutual bidder. So obviously they would be doing that in tandem.
I'm not sure how you would come to that conclusion. We've seen no bids on zoning so forth.
I'm just asking if there were any bits that have come in yet.
No, you don't come until the deadline.
Well, the deadline technically would have passed, right? So some may have come in. Terry, anything on your end from deadline of zoning? Any submissions?
We got a couple, but I don't know if they opened this one there for.
That hurt, do you know?
We got two for BOA and none for that.
But the deadline extended to weeks to the service still. They 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 extended in both deadlines. It allowed people more time and. Open minded until like you talk to Lisa and.
Liz, you gotta talk into a mic or someone's gonna hear you.
You can't get picked up, just for those wondering, you can get picked up slightly on the microphone down there. However, using your microphone is the best way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, we've worked with Lisa when we were doing the PDD, which didn't happen. But, you know, I respect her and her knowledge and, you know. Actually would like to talk with her. So I think we should table any more discussion about this until Bernadette and I have a chance to talk with her. But initially.
This was for transparency purposes. Just be clear here and that's why I wanted to get up.
Maybe there's some way to do some joint membership between the two so that there's, you know, clear back and forth. Between them, people who are willing to be on both, but I think it's a lot to ask of the zoning committee. They've signed up for two meetings a month, like the plan. It was a lot of work and, you know. Having to do with the second. Set of, you know, is quite a bit to ask of some people and and really you should have some of these people in there, including. A property owner of an owner of one of these these sites that you want to develop because. If you don't have that person in a BOA committee, you can design whatever you want and the owner may say, I don't want to build that. So that's my opinion.
Well, remember, BOA is not just property based, it's zone based. It creates a zone in and of itself. So it's some, you know, some. Property owners are not going to be represented fully in that scenario, no matter what you do in that's in that circumstance. That said, again, it was out of transparency. Make sure everybody was up to date on what was going on with that. By the way, zoning advisory committee did have the first meeting. Thanks to Jennifer for leading that until they picked the chair. The other night and it seems like a great group, a lot of energy there to do the right things and they're going to be meeting soon while they go through a bunch of documents that are already. Already in existence and also wait some of the further instructions regarding BOA and where to go with that ultimately. Your business. Jeff from the DPW has requested a one ton dump, one ton dump truck for DPW. This is open above the equipment from last year's approval for. The USDA loan. This was discussed. Jennifer, why don't you to degree, because I remember you watched that workshop. State what the discussion was. I mean. We didn't approve it in that workshop for budget, but we did address it in some way, shape or form. Is that not correct? And grab my mic if you can, Ben, on that one.
Sorry, I didn't mean that far. As far as I remember. And I did have watched it recently. It was discussed. It was discussed that we wanted to keep an open mind about whether or not we could find one and since we didn't have one and there wasn't on the. Horizon, we weren't going to put a line item budget in it, but we were, they were. They were approving of the idea of purchasing it, but they didn't do a specific line item for it because we didn't have one. Like it has an immediate need. So they talked about it. They talked about getting it. They were supportive of getting it, but since there wasn't one, there was a. Well, when it, when it comes up, we'll deal with it then.
I actually reviewed the video and one thing that was clear. Mayor, that you said it wouldn't impact this budget year because you didn't think it was going to be.
Well, there was order, yeah, that was the issue.
Because and now we're in this budget year and this is impacting. I have no problem with DPW needing this truck. What I do am concerned about is the financing. Because we're talking about financing it for five years at eight point one thirty five percent. Which is a pretty hefty interest rate and I'd like us to consider. That potentially we borrow it from ourselves, you know, essentially or buy it for ourselves. From fund balance or from potentially the ARCA funds, which we still have.
Can you use ARCA for vehicles?
Can. Okay, okay. Then from fund balance. I mean, we have a huge fund balance. You know, DPW needs this equipment. I think it's quite clear, but financing it at over eight percent. You know, costs the taxpayers extra funds. So my recommendation is is to approve it, but not to finance it.
Interesting call with the amount of things that we have coming up here to ensure that we have debt service. You know, overhead for what we are approving for long term debt scenarios here. So. I, while at first blush, I thought the same, the more I looked at it, the more I'm like, I think we probably need to spread this out. And the last trucks that we bought, you were asked about the Durango ironically, so I was tracing back today. The last municipal lease was seven point one something percent. So it's only a percent higher than what we did last time with something like this. Which I was a little surprised about since that was in November, I think, last year. I thought interest rates had gone up a little bit more than a percent and I think it did, but. Think these leases get affected differently on how they go up. So for consistency purposes, we generally have been using municipal leases for vehicles like this. The exception obviously is the USDA batch, which. We're not going to go get a USDA loan for, you know, eighty thousand dollars for one vehicle. It's just be counterproductive and the cost is probably more in the long run. And we wouldn't get the truck because it's on the lot right now, as you know, from what I understand. And that that was the difference maker. We didn't have to order this truck. That was why we didn't do it that way now based on recollection here. But, you know, lo and behold, they ended up having one that can be bought off state contract pricing. And so that's why Jeff came to us now to say, hey, I found one. So that's why it's an issue right now. Other thoughts?
Well, my mind, it's squandering taxpayer dollars to pay interest when we have fund balance and we're able to pay this out of the fund balance.
Well, either way, maybe four percent of that money, it's in the bank right now, so. It's four percent or four percent.
So it's not the point one five percent?
Well, no, you have money that you're you're keeping in the bank in that meantime. So it's technically the difference between the eight and the four in the bank.
It's the opportunity.
Yes.
So we, we're paying four percent if we borrow it from, if we take it from fund balance.
Yeah, and you're losing the four percent if you.
So that's still late, less than eight percent, right? That's four percent less taxpayer dollars squandered, right?
Eight minus four versus four minus zero, which is four, four. So that's what it comes down to, but it's usage of funds. Not sure what's so funny in the front row, but. The issue becomes what other. Long term debt we need to support here ultimately and having the funds available to do it. And that's, that's, as I said, at first I was wondering if fund balance wasn't the right answer. And then the more I thought about, the more I realized. As long as the interest rate wasn't, let's say nine to 10 percent, which it didn't end up being, I thought for a minute there was going to be 10 percent from what they were telling me, ended up being in the eight zone.
What's up fund balance currently?
It's, well, it's foreign change. Once we get a USDA loan and that that's the whole thing. We're floating a lot of things. We're also going to be. Paying a certain amount of money possibly upfront for the community emergency building unless we use a bond anticipation note first and then get the USDA loan for that. So you have things like that. You have to start wondering about making sure you have liquidity for things we've got, other things we've got going on here down the line. Some of the money in your fund balance is also ARCA funds, which you technically can't touch for this purpose. So you have to be careful and characterize it with what's what in there.
Yeah, I think we need to use the ARCA funds for our sewer improvements. Myself.
But again, they're irrelevant to this because you can't buy vehicles off it, so.
So just quick math, eighty grand is two percent of our current fund balance if you just say four million.
It's the actual living fund balance because of USDA delays is right now probably closer to three percent, just so you know. The eighty thousand is, so anyway.
I think the key is, is our proppant and loss statement. Solid. Are we doing well this year? Or are we going down? Are we going up? Seems like we're doing all right in terms of revenue. So we can afford to spend that.
Well, that brings up the next topic, the Polton Street mill drainage structure. Which is going to probably be a six figure issue. It is determined by LaBella as an emergency, what was brought up at our meeting. Two weeks ago by Rayot, which was unknown by DPW or any of us at the time. Was that the drainage structures have completely eaten away and are actually in danger of taking down the entire bank. With the erosion that's caused by that fact. It is a hundred feet down, basically the drainage structures. And so the work on them will involve some very, very tenuous circumstances. For the people doing it. We are tonight looking at the idea of declaring an emergency as our consultants recommended. And then they would be moving forward to get cost estimates and basically design estimates or design. Proposals for what needs to happen in an emergency basis. Obviously authorization for spending would still occur by this board, but we would be able to by declaring emergency. Avoid procurement policy in the hopes of getting it done ASAP because of the concerns. In the hope to get it done in this calendar year before the weather changes completely. This is probably, and not joking, in a six figure zone ultimately because of the work that's going to be involved and the danger involved with it. But it's actually going to be intended to save a bank of. Off the creek area and everything that's above it and, you know, into it so that it does not collapse over there unintentionally, obviously. So that is where that discussion from last meeting went. Is obviously not something you want to see happen, but it needs to be fixed. There are questions that need to be reviewed by council that have, you know, back for Joe Lanero about at LaBella. To make sure that it is village owned property. There's, you know, just the general concern because. The old mapping and how this is working, this was raised by Liz in email, happenstance leak around the same time Joe was raising it today. Just to make sure that it's not private only and it's on, we don't think it is, but we're going to verify that in the meantime. Again, tonight's idea is to declare it as an emergency and move forward with the LaBella proposal. To see what the next steps need to be to fix it if we are to be the ones to fix it.
Well, that could be covered by ARCA funds because that's storm, stormwater.
It could, yep.
And also, are we looking, I mean, the discharge is down the bank to the stream. Is there any alternative for that discharge not to go over the bank? I think that. If, you know, that's an engineering question.
The reason it's going to the bank in the first place is because it's the most logical place for it to go from its source ultimately. The problem is that it was intended to be pushed outward so that it wasn't actually making contact with the bank in the way that would cross the erosion. What's happening now is that it's actually cooling up and going down the bank in its entirety from that source pipe.
So they just put a pipe that goes further out and let it go down?
I don't know if that's the answer. I'm not going to even pretend to know if that's the answer.
It's just simplistic.
You saw the picture, so I think of what was in our report and it's a little bit disconcerting how that those structures took that form essentially and. I would not want to be the person doing that work, not gonna lie.
Well, it's also probably has to do with the amount of rainfall, et cetera, that's washed the bank.
That's what is coming up later. Again, being transparent and want to update based on, hey, the old adage, if you see something, say something and. Because of Rayot in this meeting, we learned of this condition. The next day Scott Kearns comes in and says, oh my God, you need to see this. And so that's how it sometimes works here. You gotta assume that we don't get to see everything in our, in our village because of. The different things going on every day. And at the same time, we made sure we got a quick assessment from LaBella once we saw what was going on and. We had a report, at least draft report and enough information to move forward with preliminary stages tonight. So thank you again to Ray and everybody else that had raised that to him. Bottom resolution for John Street Tower. So probably not at this meeting, it's probably for the next meeting because of the paperwork that's involved right now. Uh there is going to be a bond resolution presented to the board for John Street Tower. Or with an authority of one point seven million dollars for the repair of John Street Tower. Uh one point seven is not necessarily the amount to be spent, that is a maximum authorization number. So that if bids come in higher than what we anticipate the actual number to be, we don't have to go back and re-resolve. And can get the work done ASAP. Uh in speaking with bond counsel, who's also labor counsel at your firm, I noticed the same name, Larry. Uh if by counsel had recommended uh taking the contingency amount, increasing it, that uh Leverge had already put on to the amount of money. That was anticipated. So essentially, let's say, a one point three or one point four million dollar project, we're trying to get about three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar pad on it. To ensure that we don't have to go back and do this again. Uh this is based off of bid documents that were presented by uh LeBau- Leverge, excuse me. Being reviewed right now by counsel and by Jeff as well, uh as to the specifics, uh about two hundred pages worth. Uh we also have to get these over to our insurance uh company to make sure we're okay there. But uh the first steps and the concerning steps we're done is, uh Don Rhodes at Leverge. Is to get this in motion so that we can get this work done early next year. Uh we've already verified through DPW that our valves will work to shut off the water from there. In that we have capacity and ability to use the Colonial Hills and the. Pay for deeper than we need to because I could add another two hundred thousand dollars to an already bad situation that five years ago. According to Don, would cost us three hundred thousand dollars to fix. So uh Carla, if you would like to kind of debrief the board by quick, uh as to what the process would be. Once we get to a point for bond resolution for those playing along at home that want to know also.
Um if I could just add that Don said that he doesn't think it's going to come in as high. And then there may be additional dollars in that bond resolution that can address some of the repairs. Um after the John Street Tower is done, but there are some some repairs that are needed on the other two um glass line.
Well, that's that's probably the thousand dollars, probably not to get everything done in those two, based on last estimate. So anyway, for Carla to explain bond resolution, what what's what would happen moving forward, et cetera, take it away.
Sure, I just emailed the board the bond resolutions that Larry put together. Although my computer says it didn't send, so at some point you'll get some. Um so ultimately, what you do is you have a bond authorization. There's specific statutory language required to be in a bond authorization. It authorizes you to borrow up to a certain amount, in this case, it's one point seven million dollars. It does not require you to borrow a dime, it authorizes you to do it. I've been involved in projects where we've had to do multiple amended uh bond authorization resolutions. Which is why we say you should put your authorization amount as high as you possibly can with respect to this ma- uh matter. Within local finance law requirements. So what happens is the bond resolution is subject to permissive referendum. Meaning if there's a petition of at least five percent of the folks in the village, uh then it goes out to an actual regular vote. Uh if you don't get that that amount or petition within thirty days, then you have an additional twenty days known as the estoppel period. The estoppel period is when there is an estoppel um post in the paper. And folks have twenty days to uh argue about the constitutionality of the borrowing. If after fifty days you don't have a petition and you have no estoppel issues. At that point, you can move forward with the actual going out and working with fiscal advisors or someone like that to get the bond done.
So that's what's on the horizon, uh if there's any objection to amount for any reason. Probably between now and that next meeting is the time to raise it. Um but again, that is recommended by our bond counsel and Don Rhodes is working directly with Larry on questions. So it's not that like Don uh is in the dark on what our authorization amount would be. He's not reached out to me to say no way in hell to do that, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, um he was at the revenue committee and talked about that is the first step you need to take. In order to start the process for the John Street work, you have to do a bond resolution. And as you heard, it takes a while before that's filed, so.
What was the estimate on the cost, annual cost?
It's the annual cost? There's no such thing until we determine what the debt uh mode would be. It could be up to forty years, uh the way I think Larry worded it, allows us to qualify if USDA were to finance it up to forty years. Uh it doesn't mean we have to go forty years, again, it's just maximizing our ability here to take as long as we could to spread it out. If that's what we so choose or USDA allows for. The other nice thing about USDA is that if you got forty years, you could still pay it in thirty without effect or rate or anything else. So uh something to think about down the line ultimately. Right now USDA rate, just for one second, sorry, well, your uh USDA rate, USDA rate currently until I think the end of the year. Is three point eight seven five percent, uh which for something this sizable uh is a pretty good rate here. I remember, remember back to the uh USDA equipment, I think we were at two five, I think.
Yeah.
So.
Five or two eight.
Yeah, two five, I think two seven five, it was one or the other, something like that. So all things considered, for how much rates have increased, not bad, uh but yeah, I think they go by a different standard, go ahead.
Is the uh, so whoever's going to do the work is guaranteeing the work for forty years?
It's a question of, uh the way we've set it up, it's it's interesting, uh and again, you learn crash course on this one. The way you define what the work is being done is what determines useful life by essentially statute regulation. And the way that we've characterized it here, which is accurate, would be forty years of useful life ability, essentially justification. So that's the answer to that.
Okay, so does that mean that the repair will last forty years?
It could with maintenance, yes. And that's been the biggest issue here all along is there was no maintenance. If you do maintenance, you're going to get fifty to a hundred years on this tower ultimately. And so it's something just to remember and for residents that are here well beyond us in our positions here. Make sure you're telling your elected officials, go do your work on your water towers because look at what happened last time, you didn't. So there's that. Traffic measurement, last but not least, on old and new business here, and I'm going to shut up.
Um this, the idea is derived out of the existing complaints. Uh you know, and that that have been um addressed recently by by the police. And the fact that Chief Bush um indicated there is a large number of traffic violations. Um I did request from him the detail in order to um determine, you know, where this is happening. Because I live on Hyde, I hear from all my neighbors about the, you know, now Hyde's been beautifully repaid. And you know, there's a feeling that there's speeding. And and um trustee Raymond has has brought up, well, that just might be perception and not really an issue. So what, you know, he's recommended is that we actually measure the traffic. And along with the trucks, um probably on Hyde, you know, that is the place where a lot of those traffic violations were. Um to start, you know, you know, the double two measure. Um up at the um the south end where, you know, you have the field and everybody thinks it is a raceway. Um and down at the end to catch the trucks. Um like propose that, and then for any up, you know, maybe do a contract or whatever. Um to to, you know, there are firms that will do those counts and analyze them for you. Um and to do that at the other streets, be it Colston West, you know, McMaster. Um streets in the village where there has been, you know, significant activity. Um in order to um recommend potentially some traffic calming um steps. Um uh trustee Raymond has suggested, you know, relatively inexpensive your speed is. Um actually, street signs, there's scraping, there's uh, you know, all the way up to bumps and bumps. And bump outs and all that, but so that we can get, you know, have the data. Maybe do a, you know, a small step, see the results. You know, if it doesn't help, we take the next step, the next step. And and finally address these issues because I don't think, um you know, just. There's only, you know, one, one police officer who's making circulation. Um you know, if if this is something we can do that is physical change to to help the problem, you should look at it. Um and base it on data.
Question for you, as you, no, as you take it, go ahead, uh but your speed assigns, don't collect the data usually, do they?
Yeah, well, you can, it depends on how much you want to spend.
Yeah. It's one of the options of the new car, huh?
Um yeah, they do, I mean, you can go all the way up to where you've probably seen in their little trailer. And they will actually re-record speeds and pretty much do what I like a tube counter would do. But it only exclusively collects speed data. Um what, an ATR, an automatic traffic recorder, which are the tubes across the road. Um they have the capability of not only capturing the speed, obviously, they capture traffic volumes, they can also capture vehicle class. So, um and it can be done all at once. Um and in terms of of what trustee Cormos was saying. Uh yes, it's 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 helpful to, A, find out what are the actual speeds and volumes? And how many trucks are actually, you know, actual data is always good. And uh it also may, there may be some certain patterns of behavior that you may glean. That could help along for you. For instance, if there had a predilection for folks to speed in the morning. Well, now we can maximize our our usage of our police force and not bother if mid-days and afternoons. There's not any speeding, it's just mornings, people getting to work, well, that's when they know they should be enforcing at a certain location. Um so there's a wealth of data that can be, you know, derived from doing this. I unfortunately, I tried to get a hold of my contact to get a rough price for, I put two about for two weeks. At a location, um they didn't get back to me, um obviously today, so. Um but I'll continue to pursue that, uh but.
Everybody's brother apparently is.
Um but uh yeah, I I I just think, I think it would be good, A, for us to know. What our actual problems are and B, also to address public concerns. Um it it is a simple way forward to address public concerns, first of all, to find out the facts. And then how how we can address whatever problems actually exist. Um will depend on on a number of factors. Obviously, there's certain things within threshold that there may not be really effective mitigation strategies. Or it may not be cost-effective if there's a small amount of speeding or there's a small percentage of trucks. Um but it would be good to know those things and.
The the oddity in the pedestrian bicycle master plan was that the average speed at High Boulevard. According to this study that was done, was thirty-one miles per hour in a thirty. And everybody looks at that and says, no way in heck, that's true.
That also was done between Columbia and Malta, where.
So last year, last year, if you remember correctly, um Bernadette and I reached out to LaBella. With this idea of trying to get stop signs in certain school-sensitive uh crosswalks essentially, or intersections. And the old, you can't use stop signs as speed controls, uh discussion. Well, no, they told us to, they told us to, but but there was a price involved for doing a study, uh which was, I think, around ten thousand dollars, give or take. Uh and would have uh relooked at the speed all along that, because I speak, spoke to Laney, was it, at U H P? Who had done the pedestrian bicycle master plan work. And she admitted that there was a limitation to where the study area was during pedestrian bicycle master plan. I mean, if the idea is to study Hyde, which if you do that, I'm going to tell you flat out from the responses I get. You better get ready to study a bunch of other roads too, because the discrimination of it all is becoming uh very noticeable for people out there. And I understand where they're coming from, uh but that's kind of, the pricing may have been a little bit less. Because I think we sort of started steering them away from certain things they're going to do that was redundant to pedestrian bicycle.
I I don't think we need to hire an engineer.
Okay, well, DPW, have you weighed, gotten a way in on their ability to handle this?
Um I think if we contract it out, um there's people who do this, they just put up tubes. That's that's, you know, they're they're consultants and they'll produce a report. Um I'm happy to interpret that report because it's really basic.
And 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 I mentioned Hyde because I live on Hyde, I admit that. And I get a lot of complaints and actually it was a neighbor who suggested, why don't you do traffic counts? And, you know, find out what's happening, but that's the reason I requested from Chief Bush the detail on his. Because if there's another street that has more problems than Hyde, then we should start there.
The other thing that got uh raised last year with Ed Martin and I talking was that we would be able to possibly utilize on Hyde especially. And then move as the school year moved along, your speed is signed, score calls, and to no expense for the village. Because the village, remember, is back to uh using two crossing guards or paying for two crossing guards as law provides. Uh for the school from Alta Abbey specifically. And so I can revisit that question with them because I don't know if they ended up making that purchase or what happened to the purchase idea. But I don't think it's a horrible idea to see if they aren't willing to make that move with what we are now providing. In a more permanent fashion for them because we made sure our crossing guard pay scale was a little bit more, let's say, respectful to somebody. Taking half their day and doing that work for us.
So I guess hopefully we get some data as to the costs and then we, you know, likely with the next meeting. We'll make a proposal, hopefully I get the data from Chief Bush as well in the interim, and we'll see what his data shows.
I'll reach out to Ed too to see what's going on there with those speed signs. Good, public comment, it's your turn. Oh, I see, you had a hardie, yeah, Stanco. Uh again, five minutes, general respect for rules, uh and please uh provide your name and address if you can, thank you. And hold on one second, the world needs to see you. Yeah, they're seeing you now.
Stanco thirty-two Kent Street, um I do have a couple of questions regarding this ethics law that I'm hoping you guys will be able to answer during your. Response. The financials, is that in regards to doing business with the village only? Or are you expecting everybody to turn over our entire financial, our entire financials?
Ben, do you want to answer in too?
We focus it on the village though.
Okay, um and as far as the uh the part where the the child lives in your house versus not in your house. Did you, are you fixing that? Because what if my son bids on something, he doesn't live with me, I don't know what he does, he runs his own darn business.
For family, I could answer this now if you want.
Yeah, probably, so we'll be tracking questions at this point in your time.
The the family is is currently defined as a parent, step-parent, sibling, stepson, spouse, child. Parentheses, including child or spouse or domestic partner, stepchild, household member or domestic partner, municipal officer or employee. And individuals having any of these relationships with spouse or officer or employee. So um.
Yes.
I guess we could specify.
So how how would I know that? If there, if a if a job came up here and my son with this company came and bid on a job. Am I supposed to go into my twenty-three-year-old son's business and say, wait a minute, you can't do that because I'm the zoning board chair? That doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense. My children are adults, they're independent, they take care of their own financials, why would I need to be in their business? If I or my husband does any business with the village, which my husband does, and I will gladly disclose all of that. But what should my child have, my child or my child's business have to do with the village? I just don't know, I I'm not one of those hovering parents, he does his own thing. Although I did make a spell out a plan for him today.
Did you make it without telling him or did you?
So that's one of my questions, okay, if you, if somebody could figure that out and just think about that. If you, if somebody could figure that out and just think about that for a minute because that doesn't make a lot of sense, okay? Um, who is we? You kept saying we rewrote this, we rewrote that, who is we, you and who?
Um, it it has been a mostly a collaboration of Liz, myself and Sean. Um, we've asked repeatedly for comments from Frank and Bernadette. And uh, so they've had lots of opportunity, but uh haven't been as interested in actively editing this as we have.
I don't think that's a terminology that I would back there. And I am happily excited to provide my opinion where it doesn't belong ninety nine percent of the time, as you probably could guess. But in this type of situation, uh, again, discretion was used by Bernadette. I can't speak for her, but my assumption is that she shared the same idea that this is probably supposed to be managing us most of all. And so except for that question about employee union scenario, which I think. I I didn't really appreciate how much employee was being embraced in that uh new requirement list. Until the last time I read it earlier in the week, last week. Uh, that's when I kind of flagged that because that isn't us. And it starts to bring up some thorny issues that cost the village money down the line. So that's where that my concerns were at that point.
And when concerns were raised, we did respond.
I'm sorry, I'm responding to something you said. Uh, I generally, I do take the stance that I I would have preferred that we took the recommendations from the ethics board. Um, but not only that, though, this is such an important uh issue that I felt like transparency has been really important. So I've always really made an effort to make my comments public. I know there's a lot of email back and forth and I know you prefer it that way. Um, and and where I thought it was okay to do so, I would. But generally, I think because it is such a sensitive issue and and it's about transparency, I'd rather have these discussions in public.
Okay, um, and that's what I think. Um, one thing that I did bring up a few months ago at a meeting and and I'm going to bring it up again. Um, I'm not sure why you have Carla here. We have a, I mean, we have, we have an attorney who's on the payroll. Apparently, you have, well, you're consultant, okay, you collect money from the village. We have another attorney who is um our labor attorney that the village pays. The head of the um ethics board, I believe is an attorney as well. And our mayor, although not acting as a mayor, is an attorney. We have four people, attorneys, well educated people that do this for a living. And they are all telling you to put the brakes on and hold, and yet you are all pushing forward. So my question is, why? What is the urgency to get this done now? When you have four people, let's let's take Frank out of it. We have Carla, we have Ellen, was it?
Ellen.
And and Julie, who are all saying, we have problems with this, who all have a vested interest in this and who are there to protect the village. They are saying, stop, hold on, let's make sure our eyes are dotted, our Ts are crossed, and yet you're pushing. There's, why? Why? What is the urgency to get this done today versus next month versus December? What is the urgency? That's crazy, and I think the public has a right to know what is the urgency.
Two minutes left of your real time.
Okay, I just got one more thing then. Um, I'm a little concerned that we have, we're concerned about borrowing eighty thousand dollars. Was that the right amount for the dump truck?
Eighty thousand, yes.
But yet, because of this board's failure to act, we are now going to have to pay more than a million dollars on the water John Street Water Tower. It was going to be three hundred thousand, now it's going to be what, one point?
Up to one point seven up to.
Because of your failure to act. You were not willing to spend or you have to spend more than a million dollars of taxpayer money. Sean, you kept saying you didn't want to spend eighty thousand dollars for extra percent of taxpayers' money. But now it's going to cause the taxpayers of Boston Spa more than a million dollars. Because you guys would not act on the John Street Water Tower. That's pretty pathetic. You ought to be thinking about that and be more worried about what the urgent issues are right now and take care of business as they come up instead of delaying. Thank you.
Thank you. See, hand back there, uh, Mary, I think that is, yes. Name and address, please.
Mary Price Bush, one five McLean Street. Um, I have to agree, I know I've said this before, you know, listen to the attorneys with the ethics, they know what they're doing. Thank you for your time and for sitting down and going over it multiple times. Um, as far as the traffic studies go, the traffic measurements, I agree, something definitely needs to be done. I run and walk through the village and it doesn't matter, every street is affected by speeders and people who run red lights. So hopefully the study brings something forth. Um, and you can place, place law enforcement at spots at certain times perhaps. I don't know what to answer us, but I hope for the sake of all of our residents, we can get that taken care of. Um, and motion twelve A regarding the Thanksgiving dinner. I see that there's a motion for that. I hope that you can pass that. Um, we volunteered years past and it's a great event. I've heard that some of the board members have helped out at it. Um, so it's Thanksgiving dinner and it's a great time for people to join. Um, have dinner with other people who may not have families to go to or go and volunteer and help out, thank you.
And I would add that uh they do need a lot more help this year. Uh, so us sitting up here, to the degree we can help out, we should be, anybody in the audience saying the same thing. Uh, it is such a great tradition and you want to make sure that they have a proper staff, I think, for what has become a very necessary uh thing year to year. And uh, we appreciate all the work that they do at Union Firehouse for that uh Thanksgiving dinner. Anybody else in the house? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing no hands, oh, Bob Bush. Come around, go see the sheepish hand behind it. That wasn't right, come on. Yeah, this one, it's, it's public comment, so it's all yours, name and address, and go for it.
Bob Bush Junior, seventy one Church Ave. One of the things with the ethics I want to ask was. You guys talked about employees. How's this going to work with the non paid employees? You're going to have to do the same thing as employees because they're technically employees of the village. I'm not talking as a fireman, I'm talking as a concerned citizen. I'm simply talking about firemen or firefighters because they're non paid employees, it's one time we know. Uh, I don't know if the ambulance crew, I don't know if they're paid, I don't know if there's any volunteers there, but. Volunteers are actually, is there a non paid employees? How is this going to work with that?
So the current definition, just to answer your question, uh, and again, the, this has been changing so much, I wouldn't blame you for not knowing this. Is employees, any person that receives a salary or wage from village ball spa includes all employees of the village and of all governmental bodies created under the provisions of village law. Let's go to department heads, though, it's right there. The top supervisor of the following departments, police fire department. Uh, or fire, department of public works, library, court, treasurer, clerk. Uh, so the answer to your question is. Employee does not, the department head, where department head is used, does include. Essentially, the department head of fire, I'm not sure if that means each house or if that means chief. So that's actually something that needs to be considered too, because it is not specific. So just just as a thought, I'm bringing that up now.
That's why I was bringing up, you know, I just wanted some clarification, I was not able to read the revision, just came out like you guys said. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the house? We see two hands now on Zoom.
Yes, Keith Lewis, one of hers.
Okay, let's have Mr. Lewis.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Keith Lewis, thirty eight East Ty Street, Boston Spa. Uh, so I'd like to apologize for mispronouncing Bernadette's last name. Uh, I believe it's trustee Van Denza, is that correct?
Vandenza.
Vanda. Uh, I assume that's why you didn't answer my question about the mayor's illegal activity documented by a number of fellow residents in a social media firm. I want to again express my deep concern regarding the violation of fundamental rights, specifically the First Amendment by Mayor Rossi. Frank is actively hiding comments on his official Facebook page from five or more residents, including myself. This action is not only a direct infringement on our freedom of speech. But also a breach of the trust we've placed in our elected officials to uphold and protect our constitutional rights. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees us the right to express our opinions freely. Without fear of censorship or retribution. It is the cornerstone of our democracy, allowing us to engage in open dialogue, hold our leaders accountable. And participate in the decision making process that affects our community. By selectively hiding comments on his official Facebook page. The mayor is effectively silencing the voices of those who may hold differing opinions or raise valid concerns. This behavior is not only undemocratic, but it also undermines the principles upon which our nation was founded. I've also addressed the mayor's policy where the village will not timely provide. The foil requested documents within the twenty days required by law. And instead forcing me to appeal to appeal the request. Even that is not always uh enough to get documents the law allows. The village has not, to my knowledge, ever done the same to any other resident. Plus, prior administrations have never forced anyone, to my knowledge, to appeal a foil request and have always provided them timely. Lastly, the mayor is not charging his own family the required water tariff defined in the code for properties of ninety units. He stated in one public meeting, his family set up multiple meters to avoid this payment. And later said it was a finding of legal counsel, his family did not owe the tariff. That is not, in fact, prior council's finding, but regardless, the board should be posing this question. To current council with a request for a written finding, which I believe would satisfy the question since attorneys carry malpractice insurance. The village has lost at least sixty thousand because of the billing error and it needs to be addressed. Furthermore, I'd like to draw attention to the potential liability that the village may face. If it is aware of these ongoing violations and fails to take appropriate action. As residents and taxpayers, we have entrusted you, the village board, with the responsibility to ensure that our rights are protected. And that our elected officials act in accordance with law. If the board is aware of these violations and chooses to turn a blind eye, it may expose the village to legal consequences. Ignoring such violations could be seen as condoning the suppression of free speech, the violations of freedom of information law. And self dealing, which could result in costly litigation and damage the reputation of our community. I implore each of you as members of this board to take immediate action to rectify the situation, upholding the principles of the First Amendment. Foil and conflict of interest is not only a moral obligation, but also a legal duty that you have sworn to uphold. I respectfully request the board investigate these allegations thoroughly, take appropriate measures. To ensure that all residents' voices are heard, respected and equally treated. This may include providing training on importance of First Amendment, foil law and definition of conflict of interest to all members. And disciplinary action if necessary. In conclusion, I urge you to remember the values upon which we, our nation was built. And the rights that we all hold dear. And lastly, I ask you again, trustee Van Denza. Do you also limit your Facebook comments to those you approve? And do you approve of Mayor Rossi's actions? Thank you.
Thank you, next up on Zoom?
Yeah, Kristen Iaculci. Hello, everyone, um, this is.
Aw, is that my fault?
Kristen, to restart, we accidentally dropped you, so Keith, there, sorry about that.
Hey, everyone, uh, Kristen Iaculci, twenty four Chapman Street. Um, I would just like to uh speak in support of moving forward with a public hearing on the ethics law. Um, I think it's really important for us to have an ethics law that is updated and that's um reflects. Current ethics uh laws and codes of our surrounding other communities. Um, it's clear the code that we have in place today has, for whatever reason, for months been delayed um to be updated. I think it's time for us to update it and um look forward to the public hearing, so hope that moves forward. Um, I also just kind of want to comment that I think it's kind of sad that there has to be a motion on the agenda. For a data request, um, I'm seeing, you know. Trustee Cormos having to put a motion to get uh water and sewer billing data, which is something that's. Uh, from my understanding, always been provided. It's very sad that, you know, we have to have a motion on the agenda just to provide our elected officials with data that they need to do their jobs. So I really hope that moves forward and um honestly, some of the comments about delaying certain things over other things, I think are kind of partisan. I think we should just move forward with the business of our village and get stuff done for all of us, thank you.
And Kristen, congratulations, Jared had said in an opening the other night that uh you are expecting and your third child, so congratulations to you, Jared, and your entire family on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the house? I'm sorry, oh, sorry.
This is restrained.
Good luck, yeah, good luck to.
Ready of try.
Go.
Gina Marosi, ten O Glory Lane, Wellesden Spa. I've been attending the revenue committee meetings. And I'm a little concerned because I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. Was discussed that trustees should be hands off when it comes to committees, let the committees do their jobs, present their findings. Then the board members act, is that, was that not discussed at a meeting, two meetings ago or so?
Mm hmm.
Um, so I went to the, I missed the first couple meetings, went to the one, I've gone to two now. Uh, I got the minutes, read the minutes. Trustee Cormos says, trustee Cormos says, trustee Cormos says, trust, trustee Cormos says. Trustee Cormos is not on that committee, she is not a liaison to that committee. I don't understand why trustee is having so much say in the minutes. So I sat there, observed the meeting, the first one, I didn't say anything. She doesn't wait till public comment, she tries to speak during the meeting constantly. And then I learned, after two meetings of watching her attempt to do this. That she's also calling the members of the boards individually and talking to them regarding their task. This micromanagement of the committees has got to stop, just like the ethics board. They wrote an ethics plan, you changed it. We finally convinced you to kick it back to them. They fixed it. And now you've changed it again, you've got your fingerprints all over, we're right back to square one. Here we are, same spot, you're redoing your ethics code that governs you. You should, if you have a problem with what they did this last time, you should kick it back to them and let them fix it, address your concerns. You should not be writing the language. This is not yours. Stay away from the committees, let them do their thing. And I think I'm going to see the same thing happening as as it starts out, I'm worried for code. Because I think the same thing's going to happen with code, stay away from the committees. If they have a question, if they have, excuse me?
It's already happened.
The mayor, the most of it was a conversation with the mayor.
If the board has a question, excuse me, is this not my time to speak? I get damned every time I speak up when I'm out of turn. Practice what you preach. Where was I? If the boards or committees have a concern. Then they can call the trustee of their choice or the mayor. If you're, were you given direction by the mayor? Were you told what to do by the mayor?
You're supposed to address the board.
You guys started, come on. Enough, enough.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're very scary.
You're very rude, you're very rude.
Thanks, vote. I don't know what's funny.
I'd like to replay one time.
Well, excuse me, I don't know what's funny, and that's the second time I've had to say that tonight. None, none of this has been funny tonight. Do you address the board, they're correct, or it's not funny, any of them?
Absolutely, I would. Um, back to what I was saying now. The committees should not be micromanaged. You should make, you should not be calling members up on a weekend discussing their task. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. First one that came up was Richard.
And Richard. Go ahead. Go ahead. No, they unmuted though.
Yeah, he unmuted himself.
Probably a microphone issue though. Richard, let's do this. We have another hand up. We'll keep you in the queue. We're in the hands now now, so.
Yeah, Richard's hand is down. Alex's hand is up, so let's move over to Alex.
Sure. I think Richard on the mix. And Alex, go ahead.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say that we did have a meeting where, and this is my fault if it was inappropriate, but I know when we first started this off, the the Water Revenue Committee didn't have very much information. And at that point, I invited Liz to be a, to present to us, as she has already done a lot of modeling. So it was more of just a catch-up, because I know she had been working on this previously. I think we've been, after kind of the initial information gathering, we've been trying to stay to more of the traditional format where just public comment periods. So I, and I, I think that there's some sort of notion that that the committee is going to be serving some sort of political agenda, and it's certainly not my intent, or from speaking with other people, I don't think that it's a political agenda coming from anybody. I think we're all just trying to catch up and give all you guys the best information we can, so. I just wanted to say something about that, and that's really it today.
Thanks, Alex. And just out of transparency on this too, just for everybody, there was a meeting where Liz was presenting. Now, that was, I think, the second meeting of the Revenue Advisory Committee. The first one, I think, that was at Village Hall South way back. And I think the concern or the confusion came that the next meeting, one that generated on the minutes for, and we were all reviewing, because I was not there either, was that she was literally sitting at the table and every other sentence, pretty much in minutes, was trustee Cormos, et cetera. And it wasn't really a presentation by Liz on that one. That was the concern. I think that came from it, so. It looked like the last two meetings, since that point, it's been really, you know, Don Rhodes spoke in your meeting, he looked great in terms of you guys getting your information and back and forth, so. I hope that was useful for you guys, because we helped set that up at Village Hall for you. And your last meeting where you were talking about grandmother issues seemed to go pretty much grand plan, so. As you said, there's been definite improvement since the confusion of what was or wasn't supposed to happen in those situations.
Yep, and we'll stick to that with the public comment. And again, if there's anything specific we need from anyone, we'll make sure to involve you guys, but yeah, so I think we're square moving forward with what we're going to do.
And thanks again for all the work you guys are doing on your committee. It's very useful, and I know it's a thankless job at times, so thank you.
Thanks.
Hey. Anybody else in the house? Porterspouts, who wants to go? Liz reaches first.
Couple of things. Anna's comment that this ethics is about us as being the board. Actually, we're the only ones that you can't get rid of. You can't fire. Nobody can fire. You can censor us, but you can't get rid of us. We're elected. And it does cover members of the planning board, zoning board, ethics board, park and tree, and all those. And the code covers appointees who are also not paid. They're volunteers. I think what we're trying to do is to say, everybody should act ethically. Whether you're paid or not, if you're acting in the interest of the village, you should be acting in the interest of the village and not your own personal interest. So that's my comment on that. As far as the accusation that we failed to act on the John Street Water Tower, that's a false, false statement. It's taken some time. We had to have engineers review it, look at different options, et cetera. That's taken time. There's nothing that we did to delay that process. Now, in government, things don't happen quickly, and that's frustrating. But that's one thing I've learned, that, you know, there are things that I had on my agenda that I thought, no problem, we'll get them done. Well, they haven't. Look at how long the ethics code's taking. As to Gina's comments about what I should and should not do, as well as a trustee, I am a member of the public, and I can speak during public comment period. I am not restricted to not make contributions to whatever committee I attend. I attended the Comprehensive Plan Committee, was actually asked to present there as well, and then make comments during the public comment. You cannot restrict my freedom of speech by saying, because I'm a trustee, I should shut up. That's just not true.
Calling them home. Really?
I can communicate with whoever I wish, as you can.
However, I did request, and I request it again, that I think with backing for communication between you and ZAC, and actually I'd add the RAC, so please send all communications you have with them. Because you're using trustee account to do so, I would assume, and so please send those, because it's been requested a few times.
You'll see, there's nothing in there.
So I think we could take a look at, well, maybe this is a clarification from Carla. If someone doesn't know about their child's endeavors, like, that is a question. Are we, we should maybe look at households. I guess I don't want somebody to get dinged up because they don't know what their child is doing, you know, and ultimately.
That's actually, I can respond to that right now. That's actually something that I wanted the board to discuss. It was one of the things on my list, because it was originally, the disclosure was related, limited to you, your spouse, or an unemancipated child living within your house, which I believe, and I looked for it this morning, but I couldn't find it. That's generally what the standard is. That was changed and enlarged, and I brought that to the board's attention in my emails. And that was one of the things I did want to discuss, for the exact reason that it was enlarged. So that is something that's on there.
So I would appreciate as a board that we can take a look at that, just so we're not inadvertently, like, hurting or harming anyone in this process. We want people to be transparent, but we don't want it to be weirdly punitive for things that don't need to be punitive. Talking about the Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving Community Meal. I know Frank and Liz, and I'm not sure if I'd mind, and helped last year, but I want to make a plug also for the the prep day. The prep day is awesome. If no one's ever done the prep day, it is so fun. It takes, you got to get there early, because it goes really quickly. Bring peeler, knife, be careful with the knife. And you peel potatoes, you know, you cut very hard peams. But the point is, you gain to so many people throughout the community you might not have known. And you get to interact with the teens who also come and volunteer, so. You know, I think this board generally supports the Thanksgiving Community Meal. I know a lot of people rely on it to kind of connect at the meal itself, but the prep day is really fun, and I really encourage people to participate if they haven't in the previous, you know, previous years, so looking forward to that this upcoming November. Day, yeah. Day before, and I forget what time, but it's pretty early, and like I said, it goes really quick, because there's enough hands, but I can try to promote it when I find out.
Okay, I'm gonna respond. I have three items here. And I basically want to provide clarification before a false narrative takes a foothold. The water tower, so the actual history on the water tower is that there was an assessment of the water towers, including John Street Tower in 2017 during the Romano administration. And at that time, it was brought to the board's attention that there may be a situation, but the analysis of the assessment was that there probably didn't need to be anything done until the next assessment. There was a study done regarding providing water for the town of Alston, but it did include prices to either replace or repair the John Street Water Tank. Well, to think of, yeah, it was $1 million or $2 million. But at the end of the day, Mayor Romano chose not to pursue that. So the narrative that we didn't do that, that was basically pushed five years down the line, which would have been 2022. Now, Mayor Woolbright, when he took over, his plan was to create a fund balance to pay for that rather than finance it. So that's also why nothing got done during that part of his administration. So it really wasn't until just recently that when we had the assessment in 2022, and it was made aware that something needed to be done, obviously, within the next couple of years, that we moved forward. The idea of blaming folks on this board or decisions that were made by prior administrations is just completely false narrative. The next one, the next false narrative I want to dispel is the idea that we're rushing ethics. It has taken over a year to develop this ethics code. And there's been months of collaboration prior to where we've gotten now, at least by some of the members of this board. I don't, the idea that we're rushing it is just ridiculous and absurd. What we're doing is trying to actually do our jobs and administrate and create code. I don't, we have a lot of work to do, and this has been on our plates long enough, and it needs to get off our plates. Any of the modifications that were done, we're not actually changing the intent. It was augmenting the intent of the ethics code. So again, spelling another false narrative before it's created. Lastly, water revenue. I would think that the Revenue Committee would be asking trustee Cormos a lot of questions, because she's basically been the keeper of all data and all calculations for several years now. And she is an invaluable resource to that Revenue Committee in regards to water revenue. I agree. You know, if she's attending, she's attending as a member of the public. And she is entitled to say as much as she wants, as long as she wants, during the public comment period. Because she's also a member of the public as well. I mean, she is a resident, just as am I. And I would think that if I had invaluable information to give to a Revenue Committee, that I would during public comment. So that's all I have.
You got work independence check though.
I just agree with basically everything trustee Raymond.
Sean.
Sean said, so no need to take it more time. Thank you.
Few things. So for me, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter who didn't do what. All I can tell you is what our consultant has said, and the consultant said five years ago, it was a $300,000 issue if we had done the maintenance for John Street Tower when it was supposed to be done. And it wasn't. And so we stand here with this issue, and who knows what happens with the other two towers. We don't act on those soon thereafter. Now, they're, as he said, not as emergent currently, because, you know, he feels that they're in better shape generally. Maybe because of the newer nature of them, whatever it is, but the answer is, at some point, we do have to handle those towers. My job as mayor is to take a lot of the things that weren't done correctly in the last 30 years by many different people and make sure they get done once and for all. And so if it was part of the people on this board that didn't pursue it, well, shame on you. If it was people before you that didn't do it, shame on them. I don't care. I'm here to make sure that we get it done. That should be the focus ultimately. And that is my turn.
All right, Alex.
Let me, everybody else gets in this general area to go down their list, so let's do it that way. With respect to ethics, this ethics code or in ethics code of much better nature could have passed a year ago. Instead, this board decided to go and tinker with it, and tinker with it, and then forget about it for a while, and then tinker with it again, and then begin to play the race game, because my goodness, there's an election coming up. I guess that's probably what a lot of things are being driven by that I'm looking at in this agenda at this point. Well, again, I don't really care about elections personally. I mean, I'll go out and do my campaign or whatever, it happens to happen, et cetera, et cetera. That is what it is, not for this meeting, but the fact that elections are driving rush jobs when we have actual legitimate issues that are being called to attention right now. I think Anna's issue was actually spot on. I think Bob Bush brought up something under this new language that was an absolute slap in the face that fire department had, who doesn't get paid. And that too, for other people that might not get paid that do work for this village, in taking a step back and asking who should or shouldn't be put through that scrutiny is probably a question that should have been asked along the way, and it never was. So I don't know what to tell you beyond, we had a much better alternative a year ago that we could have started with, at the very least, and nobody saw it to prove it, is what it is. With respect to committees, water, et cetera, so a couple of things. Well, I know this deification of Liz with water is occurring here. I sat in on the water proposals that she had, and I was pretty underwhelmed if she's the keeper of all water, that her answer was, lower the minimum, increase the price on the minimum, as the way to raise money for water. And I'm glad to see that the water, the Revenue Advisory Committee is looking at ideas in water that are a little bit more thinking outside the box, and Don Rhodes was very good at helping with that fact in his discussion with them. With respect to what we are or aren't in committees with respect to public discussion, let's be real. We serve as a board member, each one of us, with super knowledge of certain things, sure. But when we allow committees to do work, we are basically saying, let's trust members of the public to assess these things, to give their perspective on it that we may not have. Let's not pollute that perspective. Let's let them arrive at conclusions. If we hear something that may be inaccurate, or they need information specific, because something is being requested along the line, we help to provide it at that point in time. But interjecting ourselves in a way that basically says, here's what my plan would be, or here's what my opinion is, and this is the way it should be, sort of undermines the entire process. And again, we as board members get the final say on this, don't we? And so, yeah, we all have our public opinions. We all have the right to speak. It's not always about the right. It's sometimes about being right in doing so. The timing matters. The content matters. And so just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it all the time. And that's, I think, where the distinction is, is being made in these discussions. Sit back, relax, trust the public you have working for you in this capacity. And then later on, if you disagree about something at this board level, raise the issue. That's usually the respect you should pay to the people doing the work. For instance, Marilyn did come around, since she found it funny for some reason. When it came to the zoning advisory committee last week, I was actually calling in to say, hey, you can use our technology we use here. It was appreciated. And then on top of it, I said, by the way, there's going to be misinformation being directed to you about the conversation that I had with Rory earlier today. to you about the conversation that I had with Rory earlier today about, hey, the BOA versus zoning timing and Lisa Nagle calling, et cetera. I should write check your head, that's what happened. But anyway, the point being, I want to make sure that the correct information got to you so that you didn't start to do work and then got taken by surprise a month later when we said, well, funny thing happened between the last time we talked and then. You can't really move forward with this because we, we have a different idea that's being pursued here because of professionals that are advising us the way it should work. So if you don't like it, you don't have to take the advice. I'm just telling you, we had received this. I didn't seek out Lisa Nagle, she sought out us. And that was what came forward from it and we made sure that Liz and Brandon had talked to Lisa and I stayed in. And unfortunately, it hasn't happened yet because of the vacation. That's not directing my viewpoint on the world. That's giving you information from Lisa Nagle, a professional in the realm, and to say, we as a board need to actually stop and reconsider what we're doing here with zoning and it may affect your role, your job here. That was what I was attempting to do at that point in time. Beyond that, I'm not going to be writing you personal emails beyond thanking you in the email I sent to you, which I think is the appropriate thing for mayor to do to anybody volunteering their time, to thank you for your time, for your efforts, et cetera. Beyond that, I'm a little bit taken aback that I heard about constant communications behind the scenes with committee members. Not supposed to happen. It's not. Trust your public. Trust the people you put on these committees. It may not be your selection that you're talking to and you don't trust them the same way. But you know what? Trust the people you did select on these committees, if that's the case. You're looking at codify of committee selection procedure, which you're changing again, by the way, tonight for some reason, then codifying, I guess. But either way, trust your policy. If you don't trust the policy, then why are we codifying it? That's all I have.
I have one more thing. I believe sense of humor and what you find funny is also protected under the First Amendment. So you have the freedom to find out whatever you think is funny is funny without suppression or censorship.
And I, I just want to add is this board that pushed to a vote, the capital project list, that was done by the trustees of this board and that was pushed forward by us. And also, we have regularly pushed for the sharing of information that our engineer has requested over and over and over again. And that was pushed by us during this year. So we've been pushing forward. Last January, when nothing much seemed to be happening, I gave the engineer an email asking, what do you need from us to get to the next step? Because we seem to be just sitting here. And he gave us a list. He said, I need data that I have not been given. And so we moved on that and communicated that. And he needed some work done by our lawyers. She does not aware of that. And she became aware of what she, what we needed her to do for the water district. So we've been working to push this forward in the last year, year and two.
All I know is you fought on the idea of water districts when it came to the Woods Hollow deal and the value of them. I'm glad you see the light now of the value of water district.
I did not fight on water districts ever.
Yeah, can I get a motion that unify our company number two be granted permission to host the 29th annual Thanksgiving dinner on 11/23/23 utilizing firehouse on 11/22/23 for preparation, 11/24/23 for dinner? Are those dates right?
No.
No?
No, it should be 11/22 for preparation and 11/23 for dinner.
Yeah, I thought that when I saw the date there. Okay, you've got the first and secondary then on that. Thank you. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion carries. Pagan motion that the town of Milton be granted permission to utilize Eagle Mat Lee Company, Fire Company Number One and Unify Company Number Two firehouses on election day 11/7/23 from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Trustee Fandanza, trustee Raymond, discussion. I know she is. All in favor? Propose, motion carries. Our, our elections are in the same spots as overlap districts. Can I get a motion that the mayor be authorized to execute? Well, okay, am I scratching the execute, the attached application for financing? Doesn't mean we're getting something, I guess.
That's right, we don't want that kind of financing, right? Point whatever percent. We just take it from the general fund.
Well, the idea again was to make sure we got some.
Again, it's 2%. 2% of it, less than 2%.
Well, what, what motion are you making?
As well.
I get a motion that the mayor be authorized to execute the attached application for financing for one ton dump truck to be purchased from a Gino Chevrolet and for the mayor to execute any other necessary paperwork to consummate purchase. Any funds to be expended currently will be expended from the general fund fund balance. I'll second it, just move it here. Discussion.
I, I don't understand why we're taking it from the fund balance and then we're financing it.
Same reason we've done it with the other vehicles.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't know why we're gonna take 4% of taxpayer dollars and just throw it away when we don't have.
Because we're taking a 4% of earning out of the question when we're paying for it all at once. So it is still 4%. Either way, it's the opportunity cost is the same, just you don't use it for the money you needed it.
Who's holding the note on this financing?
Here we have that in front of him, the note. Wait, KS last time, that was actually the question that came from.
American Credit Financial Services.
Yeah, Gino Financials on one of the applications or throughout the application.
They're just some finance here? Are they affiliated with anybody?
No, so on the page it says lesser American, American Credit Financial Services.
They must have a relationship with Gino Financials, my guess.
So the note holders, Mangino?
No.
That's not Mangino.
No?
No.
No, the asset fee is the Laj Lindin Public Finance LLC. So lesser in asking.
Just, just curious, but I see no reason, since this represents less than 2%, we can, we can quibble about that number, why we wouldn't just not pay interest and buy the vehicle.
So what, what if they, just curiosity, what if the police came to us with a $50,000 vehicle that they wanted bought, would be?
Probably wait till next budget season.
Interesting.
I mean, that's how you plan, you gotta, can't always be reactive. I mean, we should.
Well, they also just committed to $1.2 million of equipment for DPW that we can't get the loan in on until next year. That's the other problem right now too, don't forget. Because dump trucks will not be delivered till next year.
I have to remind that the discussion at the workshop was that this wasn't going to happen this year.
Right.
I was wondering how much of a.
Based on that, again, also is the idea that, well, since we weren't expecting a financing because at least the brunt of it will not be taken on year one, we have to do one upfront payment, it's being advanced, so it's like 18,000 or something like that, whatever it is for the first payment.
Sean, is this something that has to happen now or could it wait for next fiscal year?
I, I think he, he could use it, it's on the lot. He, he did the research, he could use it this winter because he is gonna put plow on it so that he can do parking lots and things like that where, you know, a regular tandem plows is too cumbersome to use.
Mangino's always a favorite by holding this right now because it is a 2024 Chevy 3500 red cap dump Fisher plow and Holycaster, meaning that essentially 2024, anything right now is probably gonna get a lot of interest if we do not take this off their lot.
I, I, again, wholeheartedly want to get the truck. I just, again, it's financing. I don't think we need to finance this. I think we can take it out of fund balance. And unless you, you have some analytics that are within plus or minus 2% accuracy saying that we don't need that 80,000, all of it's just speculation and conjecture.
I'm, I'm going down the line of questioning you put me through today, Liz, about the Durango. And there were two Durangos, I believe, ultimately, one for the fire department, one for the police department that were purchased. And you asked if they were budgeted for those payments or not? And the answer is yes, they were.
They were, they're in their budget.
Yep.
So this is not in DPW's budget?
Correct. Now, I'm saying basically in this whole thing, well, let's limit our exposure to do, you know, the right thing for DPW to $18,633.45 for this calendar year, or this budget year, rather. And, you know, spread out the payments in a way that also protects fund balance with a interest rate that with the opportunity cost of interest we are on money would be basically the same as paying it out, just without the fund balance effect. I agree with your emails today about, hey, was it that, was it budgeted? When you reach a situation where it's not budgeted, you gotta be a little more careful about it, as I think you were trying to suggest between lines today.
We have, we have community. What are the other things that we have to cognizant about?
John Street.
John Street. And we have to be able to have some fund balance to, because of our credit.
Also, DPW plans could be coming through very soon. Whistall Park is in the next year or so as well. There are, there's a lot of exposure still we have. And again, I have to ensure that we have enough liquid, not to say that we're bankrupt, but the timing of receiving of funds is important. And also the timing of the DPW USDA loan situation is going to be crucial too, because, yeah, we have just floated out 800 plus thousand dollars of fund balance waiting for two dump trucks. Now, we're about to take delivery into pickup truck, which is another amount coming out of fund balance right now as well temporarily until we get that USDA loan closed.
To reach consensus, it'd make any sense to put 40,000 down and take the rest out as a loan?
I mean, I guess that's an option. We just, I'm trying to look at how this is set up to see if there's a line that would suggest it. Mount climbing is for change, I guess, ultimately. I think though, the problem is this, these are kind of lease to own scenarios, Ben. So I'm not sure you actually do put money down in these situations because it changes the nature of what the agreement is. Lease to own, basically, if you make your last payment, you own it, is the way that you.
Can we just not do it as a lease to own, just do it as a?
I could check, I could check, see if they can give you some information on that.
Is the benefits from lease to own that they're going to maintain the vehicle?
I believe if you end up with a situation where it's a scrap metal at the end, technically, you could just give it back if you didn't want to be blessed, David.
What I'm saying, if there's any repairs during the length of flying.
I don't believe it's got that. I'm just checking here real quick, is there any done on this?
Would be three years.
Yeah, because there's usually preventative maintenance of the lease.
Yeah. Ethics goes, I don't think, I think I went too far. Give it back, we've got some really good leases.
No, I'm just saying, the way this is written, it says you're authorized to execute the application. It doesn't tell you to submit it. So if there's continued questions or if you need to look at the general fund issue or look at other loan possibilities, this allows you to execute it.
Right. We should, we should clarify before we go on this.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to move this along so that the DPW folks can get what they need.
I, I think we're looking for an authorization at the very least that we're gonna move forward with the actual purchase or lease of this thing, lease A, and then the technical term of what this financing does to you. So I, I guess what I'm looking for at this point would be an authorization to move forward and tell me that Gino will take it. The question is how we're gonna take it.
All right, so how do you want to amend the?
And so that we come, you come back to the board with option A, option B.
Can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to inform Mangino Chevrolet that the village will either purchase or lease the 2024 Chevrolet 3500 red cap dump Fisher plow and Holycaster? And to work with Mangino to explore other financing options beyond the one that was presented to the board at the October 10th, 2023 meeting? And to further require the mayor to report on such opportunities to the board as soon as possible.
Yeah. So am I accepting that as a change or this is a whole new motion?
Ah, you can accept that as a change. Yes.
Do you want to have that last sentence that any funds to be expended currently will be expended from the general fund, fund balance just in case you can't get good financing? You have that language in there, just in case. I think you want to have that in there because they're gonna say, really? Show me a resolution.
Since you were on a microphone, just to help carry out the end on this, any funds to be extended currently will be expended from the general fund, fund balance. That will be the last sentence of the changed motion. It is an amended motion I'm proposing. I accept my own second change on that.
I just want to be clear that you'll come back to the board.
That's my obligation.
Right, okay.
All in favor? Propose, motion carries. I get a motion, authorizing the mayor to execute the attached contract with Special Labor Council of Romer Walens Gold Emano LLP for the term of November 1st, 2023 through October 3rd, 2026. Trustee Fandanza?
Second.
Trustee Cormos, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion carries. Can I get a motion, authorizing LaBella Associates' creative proposal related to the Paul Street Milton structures declaring a condition of emergency for immediate resolution of the existing condition?
I'll make that motion.
So trustee Raymond gets the first and trustee Baskin on the second, discussion.
We, is our engineers' evaluation that this is an emergency is?
It's in the report.
To be challenged?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
No, I, I thought I put something in there. Anybody can challenge anything, obviously. But no, when you have support by consultants, that would usually, whatever court we do, usually will withstand any scrutiny.
Okay, just, just clarify.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion carries. Can I get a motion, authorize Voltspot Fire Department? Can I get a motion to reconsider motion F, which was originally a defeated motion in? It has to be reconsidered since it's a direct copy of the last motion. I get a motion to reconsider motion F, which was defeated during the previous quarter trustees meeting in September 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin. Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to thank the fire department for the detailed explanation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, so all in favor? First, I, all in favor of reconsidering this motion?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Now can I get a motion, authorize the Voltspot Fire Department to expend up to $12,500 for the renovation of the Eagle Mat Lee Fire Company Number One Firehouse bachelor? After May 31st, 2023, $10,000 for this renovation project was moved to general fund fund balance. The board proves the $12,500 to be utilized from general fund fund balance. Trustee Fandanza? Trustee Cormos, you fasten it this time too. Discussion.
I, I also want to reiterate, I was thankful to Stephen, Stefan?
Steve.
Stephen. To provide the requested detail. It's important that we know what the money's gonna be spent on and also how it will be spent. And he provided that and it'll be a worthwhile project. So thank you for doing that.
Did over me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion carries. Can I get a motion to have the village attorney make the attached committee policy into village law and to schedule a public hearing for the village board meeting on November 13th, 2023?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Raymond?
I'll second it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. So the problem here is that the attached committee policy is not the village policy.
No, you made changes, sorry.
Go for it.
As I indicated in my email earlier with my red lines, that you made changes to it on the 9th, I believe.
Can we modify?
On the 9th? What changes were made?
I, I sent it to everybody, everyone should have it in their email, but my comments, I, I can't, my computer does not like your internet here.
Well, you can modify it to refer to the latest version of the committee policy to turn that into.
I also had some questions that were sent to email and I didn't receive any responses. So I'm wondering what the responses would be.
Those were sent this afternoon.
Nope. Well, yes, because you didn't send me this. The mayor actually. Nope. Well, yes, because you didn't send me this. The mayor actually had to forward it to me. I just left off.
So we're only asking, you know, for a public hearing on this November thirteenth, which is two, two meetings away. So how do you want to handle this?
I, I want to know what you want me to do. You have a committee policy, and in my email to you, I indicated that I thought it was not, you shouldn't take a policy like this to turn it into a law, because you, you've changed it numerous times, um, October fifth. I'm sorry, Ben, it was October fifth, you made changes to it. Um, and it's just easier under legislative equivalency to change a policy by a policy, by a resolution, rather than codification, as we all know how long it takes to get laws passed. So if you want to change, I, I don't think it's appropriate, or necessary, or in the village's best interest to take a committee policy that has so many changes in the past year, or six months, however it's been, and make it a law, because it's not going to actually help you get to wherever you want to go, because if things want to change, you have to go through a multi-month process. But if you keep it as a policy, it's a resolution and a meeting.
Yeah, and it's easily defeated, overturned. That's, that's the issue. This.
So you want to codify it because you don't want it to be overturned?
I want it to be difficult to be overturned, because I think it's very important that committees, appointed committees, outside of the ones that are already definitions that say how a planning board is picked, how this board is picked, and how that board, and that like the same type of, uh, same type of codification of how advisory committees, because historically, in the Ramon administration, it was restricted to one political party. I actually applied for a position, which, and another person applied for a position, and my belief is that I was not selected, this is before I got elected, um, because I wasn't the right political party. And the fact is, we represent a mix of people on this board, and that mix should be reflected in committees.
Do you know who appointed Dave Beal?
Yes, Dave Beal was the token.
That's incredibly disrespectful to a good man in this community.
Who's passed away.
He's a good man, well-respected by both sides, and you should take that back. That is unbelievably disrespectful.
No, it is not disrespectful.
Yes, it is disrespectful.
He was one Democrat appointed his day.
Oh, my word.
You said talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's not right.
Well, that's insulting.
You can't, you can't say talking.
Just to kind of bring this back, um, there are, there is language that was added that violates, it's in contravention with open meetings law, um, because I was trying, I was confused as to whether you wanted committees to be subject to open meetings, or if you did not want them to be subject, because there's, there's language in here with respect to hybrid, and that's not under open meetings yet. So these are questions that I brought up, um, and I don't, I, I will do what the board wants me to do if we want to codify, um, but I don't know, I, I caution and advise against it, because I don't think it's going to be in the best interest of the village, because you won't be able to change it, since it was adopted June twenty-sixth, and there's been two changes since then. So I'm just offering some advice that I don't think it's something that would benefit the village, whoever is on the board.
So the, um, the piece about the open meetings law, we've discussed that previously, and the idea was that they would not be as bound to the rigid open meetings law as, uh, you know, um, legal boards that are in our law. Um, and so that's how it's been operating. I think the committee policing, as it's been operating, has worked pretty well. It has served to open up the committee process to many more people, and it has diversified representation on the, on the committees as intended. And through publication of the openings and the use of that form, uh, and giving all the trustees an opportunity to contribute to the membership of that committee, uh, I think it's worked really well. The, the change is very, very minor, uh, just for clarification purposes. They don't change the intent of anything. Um, you know, one thing is the committee interest form is required to be considered for a committee, so that's been true for a while. The other one, um, village board will approve by motion the purpose of committee duties and the maximum number of people on the committee.
But Ben, why are we going down this right now?
I'm, I'm just pointing out that the changes that.
But these are.
These are small changes that are inconsequential.
But the issue is that it's make the attached committee policy, it's not a committee policy for the village currently. This is not the committee policy. So apparently we're skipping a step.
It's, it's, it is the village policy.
No, it's not.
It's had a couple very minor changes.
It is not the village policy.
We can propose a change to say to have the village attorney make the October fifth committee policy into village law.
It's not a policy, though. That's, this is not, I'm sorry.
What is it?
This is not the, okay. This is not the adopted village policy, as I indicated in my, my very first comment. This is not the adopted village policy. On the bottom of it, it says changed October fifth, 2023, at the bottom of the policy. I don't, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm really not, but if you want this policy, then you have to adopt this policy, or you have to say, I want this to be the law, and not call it the committee policy. And then if it's the law, I think you would repeal the committee policy that you have in existence, once the law is enacted. But this is not the law, but, but this is not the law. So if this is what you want me to take and put into codification, I will look and I will research whether that can be done, and whether it's under municipal rule, whether we have to, you know, I'll, I'll look through the statutes to make sure. But you want it done like now.
Yeah, what, what about, if I may, we, we have, we have the three P A Rs, as I was saying, discussing for a minute today, uh, that have not been taken care of yet. Parks, parking, and parades. Parade, I'm sorry, what?
She said parade.
Yeah, you should see the look on her face. Yeah, parades.
Yeah, I'm not aware of where.
Yeah, Proud Boys?
Oh, that's, you're calling that a parade? Okay.
It's a, it's a parade policy. And so, okay, so we are expecting her to now jump these things, which we've all felt were important too, over this last howl along, and committee policy is now jumping the line on this whole thing. Is that accurate? What? Because, because you didn't get picked for a committee six, seven years ago.
It's my understanding this policy is legal, and there hasn't been any issues with it, so why would it be a big?
Because codifying a policy isn't as simple as saying, yay. You actually have to write it as a law in code.
That's what we want, Carla.
Okay, I would like Carla to do parking and parks to fruition and parades, because our business community is waiting for the parades code here to not have a repeat of what happened to Proud Boys, without at least having some skin in the game to get that to not happen again in that way. Okay, where's that? No, instead, yeah, exactly. And where is it? Because we're spending eighty-two revisions on ethics and demanding her to work on a weekend on an ethics code memo that didn't exist in the first place. We don't get the things that are actually needed to be precedent in our list. We are basically beating her over and over, stuff to knock everything down the list, knock everything down the list. You don't take it, no, you lose the forest of trees to what your community wants. Your community didn't wake up today and say, I think we need to codify a committee, uh, committee policy. That's gonna make me feel better today. But they probably did think, I'm glad my streets are safe, where I don't have to worry about people going down my streets, in the way that could be happening, thanks to things going on in the Middle East right now, as another group or groups could be doing any minute now. Let's get things right here and do it in the right order, because this ain't the right order.
Yes. Further, um, I, I think what the risk is, there are a lot of things I, that we do that I think has benefited us. I, I do like the, um, committee forms, um, committee interest forms, it helps us.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, but I mean, there, I don't think anybody's saying that we don't like things, parts of it, but what I, I am concerned about a couple of things, when you codify things, um, such as this, that really should just stay as a policy, we're, we're gonna have to work extremely hard. Uh, you know, say there's an instance where we need another sort of step, or another thing that we realize would be beneficial in selecting our committees, or establishing, you know, however, um, I, I think it's a little problematic that we're gonna end up making a codified law, that, that, that really removes our board now and in the future, our ability to, to adjust. I don't think I want to adjust necessarily anytime soon. We've revised and revised and revised. Um, but that, that's one of my first concerns. Additionally, why, why are we putting the effort to approve Zoom when we haven't even done it for our own board? Um, so I, I think we're just missing a couple steps, uh, to Frank's point, very passionately, like, there's a lot of things we need to work on, and, um, it has been said numerous times, what are you guys doing about parks? What are you doing about, you know, the, the Proud Boys situation?
Parking.
Parking, parking, oh my word, parking. We need to really fix that, because currently there are things that we can't even enforce. There's like people parking in ways they should not be parking, and, um, it's, you know, we cannot enforce it according to our own current law. Um, I, I, I don't think that we should do this now. Um, I think, I, I generally, I think it's working well as a policy, but I don't know that we need to codify it. But that's, that's been the problem, and a lot of my objection to some of the work that's been done here is that things that are intended to be policy, uh, there's been great efforts to codify stuff. Why aren't making this a law, making that a law, and, and it's just really slowed us down. So, um, I, you know, I, I guess that's my two, to, you know, send my piece on this, but, um, I, I just think that this is really kind of silly. And again, um, I'd really be careful about how we characterize people in our community, especially someone like Mr. Beals, who has done more good work in this community, and is well-loved by everyone. So, um, I, I hope that you will take the chance to apologize about that, um, and I'm actually hurt and saddened that that was even said, so.
Uh, I'd like to make clear that I was not talking about Mr. Beal's contributions. He made lots of contributions, but he was, was in a minority party that was not represented by the board whatsoever, and other people of the like, uh, political party were not allowed to have membership on, on committees, or, you know.
Keith Lewis?
Yeah, yes, Terry, go ahead.
Ed Lake, former chairman of the planning board, was a Democrat.
Keith Lewis.
I'm telling you, historic district commission under Larry.
Hey, it's indisputable, this policy has expanded representation of committees. I would put this above, um, parking, which is very complicated and will take forever. And, um, parks, at this point, we were hoping for parks in April.
Can you explain why parking is gonna take forever, lawyer?
Because she told us it would.
Right, and it's complicated. There's a lot of pieces to it.
She's got some pieces from our police chief already.
Unlike this, which is, you know, one page. Um, and the parks, uh, we've been waiting for a long time, and the park season's almost over, and I don't see this interfering with the parks process. So I'm, I'm okay.
A hundred percent right. Honestly, I, I, you know what, girl, I'll say publicly what I said privately to the board, because I, I believe in it at this point. NICOM says to me as much as anybody, that they can't believe you still work for us as an attorney. They can't. And these are people I've known, some of them for years, and so they're not lying to me when they say this. They can't believe that you put up with the crap we put you through in these situations. Hey, we give you a charge, we change your charge every five minutes, it feels like. We parade you over email, over a weekend, where, where's our memo? Where's our memo that even exists? But you even took your holiday yesterday and responded to it, so credit to you, or maybe you're a fool, I don't know which in that situation.
I'm just saying, I don't think the introduction of this motion will greatly impact the other things that are happening. That's my, that's my impression.
Legislation draft of, of, you know, some of those, and until.
I received the parks law from you folks September sixth. That was after I had asked you for months to give me comments. So I, I'm not trying to be, not just when I'm saying you guys need your own attorney, what I'm saying is you need an employee, you need someone whose only client is a village of Boston Spots. Perhaps that's something that you need to look at for your budgeting for next year.
And that won't be cheap. And, and Liz, I, I know it may not bother you right now, but it should bother anybody that's gonna be on this board in the future. It really should.
Perhaps we should listen to advice of attorney and just table this, and.
Can I get a motion to table it?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion, actually technically table, table motion should not have a discussion, should go straight to vote, correct? So all in favor? Roll call, please.
Trustee Baskin?
No.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fandensa?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos?
No.
Mayor Rossi?
Sean, go Cowboys, yes. Okay, make that, never throw another interception.
So, so this motion has been tabled, right?
This motion is taken.
So it can be brought up again.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Well, do you want to, you want to make this what you wrote of policy, you want to add as a motion?
For now, I'm gonna go to, can I get a motion to provide the attached water and sewer billing data in the Excel file to the trustees, any consultants hired to evaluate the water and sewer system, and the revenue advisory committee no later than October eighteenth, 2023.
Um, later. Trustee Baskin, who's still speaking.
Hearing no, uh, motion being made, can I get a motion that a public hearing on the attached revised ethics law be scheduled for the October twenty-third, 2023?
We're doing motion H.
Of the board of trustees, that's seven oh one.
Wait a second, we're doing motion H.
Motion H had no reaction, so I'm moving to motion I.
You don't give us a chance to.
I gave you a chance.
All right, well.
Well, I can go back to H, only because you're asking, but when somebody calls for motion, make the darn motion, otherwise it's not.
You were talking over us. You were not waiting for us.
Because we made, we. Yeah, G was done, and when we move on, uh, because we have to have discussion of the motion pending, is what Carla had stated earlier, I'm trying to get a motion pending of some sort. Can I get a motion to provide the attached water and sewer billing data in an Excel file to the trustees and the consultants hired to evaluate the water and sewer system, the revenue, revenue advisory committee no later than October eighteenth, 2023?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. This is a bit of the correspondence, emails, et cetera, for my request that started, let's see, July twenty-second? No, actually, in April of 2022, was a request that I made for this data originally. And, um, then Don Rhodes came in, he requested the same data, emails, eight.
Don requested the same data, I think?
Yeah, similar data. Eight, twenty, twenty-two.
Similar.
Nine thirteen, twenty-two requests.
Okay, so.
Nine fourteen. I have made multiple requests. There was actually a motion that we passed on November seventeenth.
Terry, was her foil that is related to this fulfilled or no?
By previously, yes. No, it was not fulfilled.
Well, then there was an appeal process, as I stated in the office, what, two weeks ago.
She shouldn't have to.
I should not have to, and this is a motion to provide the data. See what's in red there? Those are the data points that were not provided.
Carla, would you like to provide some?
Excuse me, I'm speaking. Those data points are the original data that people submit, the meter reading. Those have not been given to anyone so far.
Liz, the meter reading data can be done by a simple subtraction of two cells.
Yes.
Can you not do that in Excel?
Without seeing the original meter data, you do not know that any of the rest of it is accurate, that there aren't mistakes. You can't tell who used thirty thousand gallons, or who didn't report. And the other piece of information that was, now, remember, this And the other piece of information that was, now remember, this data was given to me by previous administrations. No problem. I made a request to Julia. I got it in a couple of weeks. So I have now gone, how many months here? Eighteen months requesting this information. And there's been, oh, if we can't release it, we, we, we're busy. I am.
Hey, Peter, uh, you're on the revenue advisory committee, correct?
Yes.
Is there any need for additional information for your boards or committee?
I think we have all the information we need. I'm, I'm just going to ask Bob tomorrow what trustee Cormos is talking about and maybe he can clarify for me. But our committee, we can make, all the numbers we have, we can make a very educated.
And those numbers assume that the meter reading data was done correctly. And there's actually no way to prove that without having that data. So if there's no problem with that data, you give it to me, the trustees, you give it to the consultant, you give it to the revenue committee. They can look at it, decide whether they want to do the math. But that is the origin of all the billing data. And it is public information. It should be provided. The fact that it is not is very, very troubling.
As you said two weeks ago, just to be clear, you accused me of hiding data from you for nefarious reasons and then accused me of getting nothing done for the last year and a half as mayor. Yeah, to continue a conversation from two weeks ago. It was a lovely conversation with you, Liz, but the crux of the conversation was you came in to replace your original request. I said, you can't replace your request, Liz, because you already had it fulfilled.
It was not fulfilled.
I said to you, if you felt it wasn't, appealed that. You had, by all means, a right to submit a new request. However, you couldn't get over the fact that you can't replace a request that's already been responded to.
It hasn't been responded to. Those red fields, which exist, which have been given to me before by other previous administrations, have not been given to me.
When it comes to foil and fulfillment question.
It is not a foil issue. It is a trustee issue. I have the right to see that data as a trustee.
You've been provided by Bob Kavanaugh, what he feels is responsive to that, as I stated to you, as I stated to you. Hold on. I don't even have access to that data.
That data exists. That data is in the system. That data can be exported to an Excel file. And it has not been given to me as requested. That is a violation of foil.
So you're saying that Bob Kavanaugh doesn't know what he's doing? Is that what you're saying?
If a trustee requests information for legitimate reasons, for the good of the village, that request should be honored and not second guessed or undermined.
Bob Kavanaugh and Scott Kearns have been tasked with providing the information you've requested as a trustee.
Given this information to me.
Have you asked Bob?
Yes, multiple times.
And what was his answer?
Well, I'm doing something else. I'll do it later. And I have been pushed and told, no, you can't have it. You know, arguments from you, arguments from Bob. Oh, I'm busy with this. That's why I'm left with doing a motion demanding this information. It takes literally minutes.
So are you calling Bob insubordinate?
No, I am not. I am requesting the data.
He's been tasked to provide.
Bob is a volunteer.
No, he's paid.
Not to feed water.
He's paid way too little, no doubt.
I know. And I have nothing to say about Bob. I'm saying I have not been.
He has not provided what was requested.
Okay, so you're calling him insubordinate then?
No, you're calling him insubordinate, apparently. You're putting.
You're suggesting he's not providing the information.
No, I'm not saying he's insubordinate. I'm saying I am not getting the information from your administration. He reports to you. You told him.
I told him what?
Not to give me the information.
I told him not to give you the information.
Possibly.
Do you have proof of that?
Or he's decided that I don't need that information. That is not up to him to deserve.
What is the reason she has not gotten that information?
Yeah, tell me.
I, as I stated to you, I don't have access to that information, so I can't provide it to you. So there's only one person realistically is going to be able to provide it to you.
Actually, Don Fravor can get it out of the system. He has not.
Don is not employed by the village currently.
We, we are using way too much oxygen on this argument, okay? It's a simple Excel spreadsheet that could be exported within 30 seconds. Eighteen months seems a little long for a 30-second operation.
When was the last time you used admins again?
It says it's an Excel file.
It's in admins.
Which can be through a CSV file translated into Excel in a matter of seconds. So let's stop the nonsense and vote.
Very well. It's going to go interestingly. Bob leaps tomorrow based on this conversation because none of us are getting this information ever. Uh, all favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, go to roll call to stay out.
Trustee Baskin?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Vandesa?
No, because it seems as if there's a current process, uh, there's an appeal process. And apparently it might not be as easy as everybody is thinking is to export that information. So if you could provide any explanation as to why it's so easy, I don't know. I, again, it seems like Zach doesn't need it or revenue. Gosh, too many acronyms.
Rack, rack.
Rack, thank you. So, no, I, I don't think that it's worth harassing our employees over this. Thank you.
Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Uh, I always hear Julia did it, Julia did it well. Maybe you should have offered Julia the equal amounts of money to paper. Uh, because obviously nobody in our current administration, quote unquote, knows how to provide it to you at this point in time. I, so I don't know what we're hearing again from this, but the answer is no.
Excuse me, they know how to provide it because they provide it. Good part.
The vote is three to two in favor and so motion carries. Kind of get a motion that a public hearing on the attached revised ethics law be scheduled for the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the board trustees at 7:01 PM. Hold on, before we go, hold, hold. Kind of get a motion that a public hearing on a version of the ethics law to be finalized by the board of trustees on Wednesday, October 11th, be scheduled for the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the board trustees at 7:01 PM.
Don't we need to introduce the motion before we amend it?
No.
I, no, we're ready, we're ready to vote on this motion that's dated nine, nine, or 10, nine.
I thought you were gonna.
So you're going to risk.
Can I, can I hop in? Because someone reads what I write. I sent you all an annotated, what do you, Mr. Mayor? I sent you all an annotated agenda and you need to declare yourselves lead agency on this.
Open point.
And you have to do that before you set the public hearing. So I provided the part one of the EAF to have you, um, review and declare yourselves lead agency. So you need to make a motion to declare yourselves lead agency first. And then you can set the public hearing. And you have to do that because it's a different law than the one you did earlier. That was your question.
That's my question.
Question, hold on one second. If we change the law tomorrow, does that change the seeker? Okay, because it'll be minor?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm hoping we change whatever changes we need. We do it tonight or we don't change anything or we get it done tonight.
We're not going to be able to do it tonight as we say we have to talk to labor council some sort overnight.
No, no.
No, no, no?
No, there really is nothing to change. Labor, we, we won't be able to.
We discussed earlier that we were going to have labor council look at it just to make sure we were just covering our bases.
It's not going to happen in one day. Look, we had two labor lawyers skin this and found no objections.
Mayor was going to look into it to get our labor coun, labor council to look at this.
It won't be implemented until.
I need to state, because you were talking about my partner Larry, he did not look at the law at all. I read him that portion of it and I discussed it with him. So he did not skim the law at all. So I just want to put that on the record that he did not do that.
And to characterize Elaine as not having an issue or concern about it is also not true because it could cost money to the village ultimately in terms of impact bargaining, as Carla raised. But she did not read the entirety to see any other concerns she had at that point in time, especially with the use of the word employee throughout, which still remains.
So can we make a motion on the EAF that says that it's the same as the previous one? There's no changes in the EAF.
We never did a secret motion, did we, in the first place?
No, okay, so we need to do a secret motion?
Yeah.
And how do we state that? I just, I mean, I have the form here.
Yes, all the form, no, that's the notion of a public hearing. Form, yep, in your right hand. All it says is that you're doing a local law and you just need to declare yourselves lead agency. So the motion is to declare yourselves lead agency.
All right, I make, I make a motion to declare Village Ball Spa lead agency for.
Board of trustees.
Board of trustees, lead agency for the revised ethics law dated nine, uh, 10, nine.
Don't, don't.
What?
Because then you're going to force a new seeker possibly if it does change. So be generic for this one at the very least.
What if, what if we don't get, uh, an opinion tomorrow?
Then you're still safe because it's, you're being generic in the seeker motion. So.
All right.
So hold on. Let me name the motion for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Kind of get a motion, uh, naming the Village of Ball Spa Board of Trustees lead agency for seeker purposes related to the ethics code repeal replacement to be discussed further on October 23rd, 2023. It's apophytesque, meeting of the board of trustees.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Raymond.
So we don't have to say public here?
No, that's second.
All right. I'll second.
I give it to Liz, actually. Liz had the second actually first.
That's fine.
Uh, discussion. Can I get a roll call on this, please?
Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Vandesa?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to put forward this motion. We can discuss from there. Got to get a motion that a public hearing on a, on a version of the ethics law to be determined by the board of trustees no later than 5:00 PM on October 11th, 2023, be scheduled for the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the board of trustees at 7:01 PM. Trustee Vandesa?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
So how's, how's it going to work? We're going to vote?
We're going to try to find labor attorneys to give us the final thumbs up or thumbs down on this. I will try to get to Elaine tonight.
Maybe she has a second, he can call upon.
Yeah.
Is somebody in NICOM who knows Elaine Corrigan? Just in case.
They're not our attorney though, so.
Yes, they are.
They're not our attorney.
No, they're considered to be our attorneys.
They are not our attorney. They don't have to necessarily advocate for the village's interests. They're consulting in a sense, not, not a paid consultant. But I think they're there to get advice generally to board members. But I, I'd rather are, are paid attorneys that are legally obligated to work in our interests.
I would like to authorize Carla to utilize Larry if we have to pay additional fee to provide advice related to this. I can't see it taking more than an hour of legal time this tomorrow if he is available.
Yeah.
That would be a good idea if we can do it.
So let's, let's state that $500,000 was spent for attorney review, labor attorney review of this if available. Is that okay?
Accept.
Okay, that, that's not in this motion. It doesn't have to because it doesn't break the procurement requirements for a motion.
So if there are, um, issues that you bring up, Frank, that you feel are important and we.
It's not you bringing them up, it's going to be somebody else.
It's always, it's always a mix. And, um, how do we know that this is going to, at, at the end of the day? I guess I'd like some guarantee that we move things forward. Because as Carla said, we can pass this. There's nothing wrong with it legally, just won't be enacted for employees.
The fallback will be the current version. It's just a question of fixing.
Can we put that in the, in the motion? Fallout back will be the current motion, current version, nine, nine version?
I, I basically said that we'll reach a point tomorrow and if it's not at, by 5:00 PM, then it's this version. So it should be pretty much obvious what the version is that.
All right, the 10, nine version.
Yeah, so.
If we, if we don't reach consensus, it's the 10, nine version.
Well, in this discussion, we'll make note that that's, that's the intention of this motion, okay? This discussion is making sure the intention of this motion is we don't reach some kind of agreement tomorrow by 5 o'clock that this motion, that this version from 9:00 PM last night is the one.
All right, I'm comfortable with that. And I do hope we were able to reach something that makes sense further.
Uh, let's go roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Vandesa?
Yes.
Trustee Cormos? Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Here, what we know, federal resolutions related John Street Tower Bond Resolution till next meeting. Other business, I need to, I, I ask for a motion approving the CHPE SWIP, the Stormwater Protection Plan, uh, which was reviewed and approved by Lobella Associates and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute any documentation related to such an approval. Trustee Vandesa?
Seven.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
All, well, just real quick. Is this related to the emergency work or is it?
No, no, this is the underground wire.
Oh, the Chancely.
Yeah, Chancely Hudson. Uh, they dealt with the landowners, as I said, and kind of helped the SWIP over head to get them to react. They did that. They also changed SWIP related to recommendations by Lobella and reissued based on that.
Okay.
And Lobella approved that based on those changes. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other, other business?
Yes. I'd like to know what the status is on Village Hall essential repairs.
They, they are being considered right now. Ruben was by and we got Ruben to take a look at them and also refer to Lansing Posh. So we're waiting for the official proposal work to be able to prove the proposed, you know, sketches designs for what's next so that we can send out to bid. So we're just waiting on Lobella right now.
So what's the timing on when we're actually going to get this done?
ASAP because the stuff that's already in the queue about the fire apron, it was open that back by now after the slight revision that was needed, still waiting on that. And also the Wiswell Park sewer pipe issue, still waiting on the additional information they were supposed to be getting for that. So they're clearly behind right now. And the fact that they worked so quickly on the Hope Street situation should tell you that in their view, it is an emergency based on that fact. So just keep that in mind.
Uh, second issue USDA, have we resolved whether we are still eligible for grants?
Have not resolved that part of it. I, I, you spoke to Mr. Grass, so I think at the same time I emailed him. Chris said send the information by him that Mr. Grass has. I don't possess it, so if you have it or if you want to go get it and I'll send it over to Chris, I'll do so.
Okay, I'll call Jay and see where that's at because he didn't send anything to me.
Yeah, I don't have it either that I don't.
Also, while I was, was listening to, uh, that workshop, there was an indication that Lobella would be doing a DPW assessment with a space plan. And that was back in March.
Well, no, we approved, uh, the architectural assessment and design preliminary concept a few meetings later, I believe. And we were waiting for that. Ms. Wally, uh, who is their architect that's working on that, that's fine about a week and a half, two weeks ago. He told me that is, uh, on the burner forthcoming very soon. I was hoping you're going to have that in the last few days, haven't had it, so I'm going to be checking back.
So that is coming?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Short term.
You got it.
Okay, um, the last thing is.
You can ask these by email, you know, I'm happy to provide this information as some of the higher.
Maybe we were both discussing it. You want to bring it up?
Not right now. The one thing I wanted to bring up was pedestrian signs on Ballson and McMaster. I get jealous every time I go down Hyde Street and see the three sets of signs.
Yeah, Jeff acknowledged you. I don't know if you saw his response. He said after feeding, he'll be getting those up.
Okay.
He's got the signs of the Procolino Hills area and replying, what's his name? Jen is the other side of it, uh, to get those signs up as well. So he's got a lot of different signs and whatnot to handle. So, and I'm sitting out with him on Thursday to make sure we get everything that you get done for the calendar year done. So that's part of it.
All right, thank you. Rule 50 crosswalk, any update?
I got the information back from Joe on who to reach out to at your, uh, your firm. So I'm going to make that call this week again to make sure because I think it also has some personnel over there to, that may have affected this a little bit. Yes, yeah.[1774.76] Yes, yeah. And so I've gotta make sure I hit the right person at this point. What's going on?
I have one other question.
You know, where's your job to me now? Sorry.
Terry is responsible for the village's Facebook page, correct?
Yes.
And you stated before that you distance yourself.
Correct.
That. Um, there was a recent posting that, um, you know, occurred on the weekend and I'd like to know who posted that.
Which posting was that?
Um, it was about the Mack Boston, um, you know, from the car show. Show the Mack Boston eighteen truck and it shows some pictures of you and Bernadette and some other pictures of that. It seemed to me that that type of.
I didn't, I didn't even see this, so I don't even know, tell you.
I don't know who authorized that.
I, I didn't, uh, so.
Who posted it?
Who posted it?
I would assume Terry, who's sitting to your right, might want to give him a point.
On the Facebook page? Yeah, I didn't post it.
It appeared.
And Frank didn't post it?
It appeared on the village's Facebook page, which was somewhat.
Jen, you didn't post it?
Then who posted it? You have to have authorization to the village site. Because as I remember, you know, Terry, Terry describing that that site was just for, you know, village business.
If you look at the site, if, if you look at the post, it looks as though they posted it and tagged us. The Mack Boston eighteen truck, New York State Volun Firefighters Memorial Village. And tagged us.
Somebody else posted it?
Somebody else posted it. And said, hey, anyone who's a fan of Ballson Spa.
There's obviously a problem with a Facebook page, cause then anybody could tag.
Right, we gotta fix that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So does that mean that anybody can do that?
Well, we're gonna see in that works. We'll put Terry under it to make sure that, that option is out. The problem with Facebook unfortunately too is that they change things constantly inside that app that company. And so things like tagging and whatnot constantly are in flux. So you almost have to go in daily, change your options to protect you on this stuff. And so.
Yeah, because I, I don't, you know, I mean, that cost is a good charity, but the other, there are lots of other charities that if we're going to be posting information about various charities, it should, should be, you know, open to everybody or.
No, 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 can't do that.
Or, or, you know, just like no comments.
Just have to stop tags.
Yeah.
So noted. Thanks for calling to retention and not nefarious.
No, I just want, it seemed unusual.
It's a good question.
Uh, we need an executive session. Make a motion. Uh, the executive session is for discussion of land contract and potentially discussion of collective bargaining.
Second.
Uh, trustee Fundesa, trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I don't think there's going to be any reaction, but I can guarantee that after this.
Winning the battle.
Alright, thanks for sharing.
It wasn't even a tag.
So there's no way, how do you stop it?
Well, maybe you're associated, where you use pages associated with tag of Bill's or Paul's spa automatically as a location. And so if you tag being in Bill's spa, maybe actually doing that way, tagging as in your location tag as such.
There's like a false spot in York is like the one people really want to use and then there's ours, which is.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, as a policy, we're not going to put everybody's emotional stuff on.
There's no way to adjust it.
No, we're not.
We're, it was not intended, that was the whole thing.
Right, we have to adjust it.
No, it shouldn't show up on it.
Well, you get it. It was an unintended consequence, but we learned about it the hard way here.
You're gonna have to do some research and how to.
Yes, we'll figure it out.
How to prevent it.
Yeah.
That was not what the executive session was about. I cannot tell you further because we're not going to take any action at this point in time. Uh, the executive session is over. Can I get a motion to, uh, motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at way too late? I mean 10:55 PM. Trusty fundeta, trusty basket discussion, all favor. Post, thanks for joining us folks, bunch of carries.